Okay. You're now live.
Good evening. And welcome to the Board of Trustees' work session for July, no, I'm sorry, June twenty seven, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Kev, a motion, open this meeting.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item on the agenda is the adoption agenda.
So move.
Well, are we gonna take?
Yeah, I just, as a matter of course, I take the people who are here.
Right, so we should modify it to take the whichever number it is.
It's W.
Want to take one W out of the order? Yep.
So I'll make the motion?
So move. Yeah.
Core rule.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Okay.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Yes.
Uh, okay. In the room tonight, we have two residents from two volunteer board committees. We have Kate De Hayes and we have Tony Gelber, and they want to talk about a possible suggested tweak that might be presented to the Army Corps of Engineers. So if you two want to come to the podium, please.
So, um, here you go. This is a handout that kind of walks you through it. We put all the data right on there. Tony, you can, uh, there you go. I've got one for Jerry, too.
Give it to Dan.
There you go.
And Mike Murph, could you open it up? I'll leave it open.
Do you have this in the, like, PDF form or something?
It, it's a series of PDFs. It's like thirteen PDFs, so they're pretty.
Don't close the door, please. Don't close the door.
I can send that to you.
To Sally, because then Sally can put it back, it's backup on our agenda.
Okay, sure, sure.
Thanks, thank you. Hi, Dan. I think it's amazing there's only one town.
Is there one?
Only one town.
Hey.
Victor doesn't have the backup.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, Bobby, Dan, and Bob. So I'm Tony Gelber, and I'm speaking primarily as a resident and member of the Flood Committee, not as the chair of the Flood Committee, just actually, and not go running what on the mount to talk about. And then this is Kate De Haas.
Hi, um, so we did present it to the Environmental Committee, but I think there's general support, though. It was a slightly chaotic meeting with people coming late, so we did not overvote, but they're very aware of this proposal.
So basically, in the Army Corps project, part of the project is a diversion, what they call the diversion culvert that runs through the north side of Columbus Park, the parking lot, just meets the Jefferson Avenue Bridge. So the last time we went through this with the Corps, I had tried to get them to consider an open channel there versus the diversion culvert on Wallace and Taylor. Um, and we did a report, and this is the page is funded for, I will not. So since we've been back on the committee, or I've been on the committee, I've been thinking about, let's do the open channel. I've recorded some of this stuff, as some of you know. But I think this open channel is, I'm, I'm suggesting now, exactly as the Army Corps has suggested, same length, same starting point, same ending point, same size, same that an open culvert versus a closed culvert. Okay? Um, I talked to Kate about it months ago, and she liked the idea, and I stated a lot of memories to tell her to talk about it in a minute. Um, the Army Corps project says that this culvert will be used flooding a certain number of feet, and I know some people aren't going to be concerned yet, as the Army Corps said at the meeting on the eighteen, they were downstream, upstream. My feeling on this part of the project is that the faucet beam is the limiting factor. I mean, what is the faucet beam? There's no additional flow that can happen. So I don't think during this project, kind of ahead of the Army Corps schedule, presents any additional flow risk to people downstream of the faucet beam bridge. I'm suggesting that we look at this as kind of emergency preparedness litigation strategy that we could do in a short period of time, like six to eight months, not sure if it goes nine, or about a week and a half ago, so we send a few get a concept of it. And that it would, that tunnel save money or give it to the project. I believe doing the open channel will save additional money. So I think it can be done in a short term, it will give our residents flood relief, and it can be tweaked as part of the Army Corps project with the enhanced requirements on residents. Thank you.
I'll kick off, and I'll just walk you through the handout, which basically makes our argument for us. If you look at page one, there, that's Columbus Park, so that's from the village's own maps. You know, so we see exactly what the situation is with the Mamaronek River coming down under the Jefferson Avenue Bridge, Sheldon River coming in, meeting at the confluence, going under the railroad bridge, et cetera, et cetera. We're all extremely familiar. Um, so the Army Corps has said that their plan will mitigate flooding, but not stop it. So what can we do as a village to help their plan be more effective? Um, and so, um, so we've put this together. So pay, the first page is basically, um, you know, the existing situation. Tony took these pictures during the floods. Oh, this was during Irene, okay, so it was probably worse during Ida. So, you know, there's some shots, just to remind us all what we're talking about here, um, how nasty this was, and the peak flows going under the railroad bridge and the Halsted Avenue bridges on, on the next page. So, um, the pages aren't numbered, sorry about that. The, the fourth page is, this is coming from the Army Corps' report. So we stuck, I, you know, I put this together, I stuck really closely to the Army Corps proposal because, you know, it's been funded, we don't want, you know, I mean, from this, my, my, my opinion, uh, you know, we may not a hundred percent agree on that, but. So this is, this shows you, uh, in the, you know, you see the red, uh, you know, the Mamaronek Avenue River, I mean, sorry, the Mamaronek River, the Sheldon River meeting at the confluence, and that black line there is the culvert, or they, they call it a diversion culvert, and it's effectively a tunnel that's running under that Jefferson Avenue Park. The inlet is right after the Jefferson Avenue Bridge, and then it, it rolls through and it meets up um, and goes into the bridge that goes underneath the Metro North tracks. So, so they've defined their, their plan. Their culvert, it, it shows on a later page, is three hundred and ninety feet long, it's twenty-five feet wide, it's eight feet high, and it ends about three and a half, three to three and a half feet below the parking lot. And so their plan, you know, as presented, you know, and using all sorts of old data and so forth, um, you know, has to, you know, stick to what they've designed, and, um, and so they're gonna do build all this, rip the place apart, and then put the parking lot back and deliver it back to us exactly as they took it from us. So take a look at the following page. This is kind of a tricky-looking graph, but this comes from the Army Corps report, the two thousand seventeen final report. So, um, so the, the main graph is there on the left, and we do kind of a close-up, so you can get a better picture as to what, what we care about in this particular diagram. So it shows the culvert where it sits. Um, so you can see where it sits off the bottom of the river, it's, you know, it's up off the river. Um, and it shows the floods. So you see here, the blue line is the, um, is the one-year flood. The black line is the ten-year flood. Then we have the green line, which is the hundred-year flood, and the red line, which is the five-hundred-year flood. So this shows very clearly that 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 diversion culvert comes into action during the one-year flood, and it handles up to the ten-year flood, and, and a little bit beyond the ten-year flood, and then it's done. It can't do anything further. It's a cement tunnel underground, it can't absorb water, you know, it'll keep on flowing the water, but if you have a bigger flood, that's all it can do, that's what it's designed to do. Um, and, uh, and all the data on the next page shows you, you know, where, more or less, where that parking lot is, where that culvert is gonna be, and so on and so forth, and gives you the data, you know, if you want to, you know, remind yourself what the data is. So it's also a parking lot, and so I just want to quick get in front of that, because we're talking about eliminating, changing the parking lot a little bit. There's a lot of spaces, it has a hundred, I'm just talking about the big lot now, a hundred and forty-one spaces. Um, if we redesign that lot, we're gonna lose some spaces, about ten percent, but that can be tweaked, that can be tweaked also. So now here's, here's the proposal itself, next page. This is what I'm talking about, everybody has it there? Okay, take a close look at this. This is, this is really our joint proposal to you, uh, which is, you know, the input from two, two kinds of points of view, flood control, but also environmental, uh, aspects. So here's the old open culvert, you can see it there. It's exactly where their culvert is. It has exactly the same dimensions, it's three hundred and ninety feet long, twenty-five feet wide, um, eight feet high, the only, what the difference is, it doesn't have a ceiling. Okay, it's open to the air, and, um, and we're proposing it's open, and they may consider u- using grass. Make it out of grass, why not? It's an air, like, it's like a giant irrigation ditch, so instead of cement, you make it grass. It hold, it'll move water just the same, right? You know, the Army Corps can tell you if they think that's a good idea or not, but why, why am, am I putting it out there? Because then it continues to be permeable, it continues to be, even if it's, as it's moving water, it can also absorb water and recharge the groundwater. Now, the, the, the current, um, plan is, the part, the culvert ends roughly three and a half feet below the parking lot surface. So what the proposal is, is remove all the asphalt, take away the asphalt parking lot, take away the dirt, take away three and a half feet of dirt, okay? So that the parking lot level matches the height now of their open culvert, okay? Redo the parking lot in permeable surfaces, permeable pavers, I've got a lot of stuff on that, we'll talk about that separately. And so what does this do? The open culvert has the same carrying capacity as their existing culvert, um, but it allows permeability. It also allows, I think, for easier maintenance than an underground tunnel. It's right there, you can get down to it, there's stuff that piles up in there, you can, you can see it, you can easily get it out. I mean, I'm imagining a scenario where you've got an actual flood. This thing is gonna have a grill on one side, because you've got to keep people out of it, right? It's gonna have a huge grill, you know, eight by twenty-five, you know, on one end. Um, and it's gonna be at the water level, it's gonna be at the intake. I imagine what's gonna happen in a huge flood, stuff's gonna pile up in front of that grill. It's gonna be in the river, piling up in front of that grill. Instead, it's gonna be coming into the culvert, you know, so the sheds and the bicycles and the rest of it, you can see it, it's right there, more easy to retain, so that's, you know, safety issue. But, um, the other issue is, if you think about it now, you're lowering this parking lot by three and a half feet, that, and actually not both parking lots, both parking lots, which are in the floodplain. They are the floodplain of the Mamaronek River. You replace the asphalt with porous, porous papers, and you lower the whole thing. It will have a storage capacity of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. That equates to two-point-six million gallons. So, so this, it's now, it's a parking lot, but it's also a floodplain. It's also a floodplain, it can hold water. Okay, it can hold water that, that will not be going into somebody's, you know, living room, and it will be, it'll be permeating down into the, um, you know, into the groundwater. And it will also, by lowering the whole thing, uh, it will allow access to the shoreline areas. So look at the next page. This is a shot of the side of, um, of the, of the Jefferson Ave, big Jefferson Avenue parking lot, as you, you know, on the other side of all this, this growth, it, right there is the river. This is all invasive growth, it's like fifteen feet tall, you cannot get through it, it's a, it's a complete mess. Nobody goes there, nobody uses the river there. Um, it's, it's parkland, in fact, all of this is parkland, but it's a complete waste. Now look at the next page, Jefferson Avenue parking lot, we're looking at the parking lot back from Columbus Park across the confluence. You see the little house there? See the little house in the picture? That, that tells you how tall this thing is, how steep it is. It's a steep slope, which is full of invasives, you can't use it, and it's very highly subject to erosion. Um, so this is now gonna be much lower, and part of the proposal is get the invasives out, we'll redo it with, you know, native bushes and plants, we'll put some pathways in, we will allow, so this whole side of the park comes back to life. Um, now residents of that neighborhood can get to it, and they can enjoy it, and they can use it. And same thing, here's another picture, lowering the parking lot enables this section of Columbus Park to be enjoyed by nearby residents. So just to end this, you know, you may have heard the term "daylighting." Everybody's probably heard this, right?
Yeah.
Daylighting means, like, for years and years, the Army Corps and various groups put rivers, they call it burying rivers, they put rivers into tunnels, right? And this is, that, so I'm, I'm gonna read this, what is daylighting? This is from an Army Corps document, it's from a policy document that they issued last year. This is the direction you're going in, which is why I think they might be open to this tweak. And by the way, I, I stood up and proposed this, if you recall, Tom, at that meeting. I know there were a lot of questions, and the man did not say no. The, the hydrologist, he just said, oh, okay, floodplain, oh, okay, you gotta do that with your village, take it to your elected officials, that's what we're doing tonight, okay? Deculverting, also known as daylighting, reopens creeks and irrigation canals once covered by pavement or diverted into pipes. The practice of burying water may have adequately managed waters in decades past, but increased development, populations, and impervious surface cover in urban environments have increased stormwater flow during rain events. Burying water in such cases also eliminates possible environmental benefits. The existing hard infrastructure cannot accommodate the additional waters, and flooding has become a problem for many urban environments. So what, what we're giving you here is a forward-looking, environmentally sensitive flood control project that is in harmony with the Army Corps' current thinking and does not vary very much from their existing, um, from their existing proposal. Okay, so I hope you like it enough to consider it, to put it on your agenda.
I could tell you, I could tell you what I talked to Tony about today.
Okay.
And Tony called me, and we had a nice conversation. And, uh, what I said to him for my sake is that the village is on the cusp of hiring a village engineer.
Okay.
And I think that everything that we do, and that every proposed tweak should be evaluated by the engineer.
Okay.
Based upon, you know, the village's operational needs, and whether it, it, it is going to be something that, uh, makes sense, both with the Army Corps plan and with the village's plan. I'm not, and, you know, so I'm not saying one way or the other.
I understand.
But I, I think that this is, you know, a, a, a very, as I've said before, existential plan for this community, and I just want to make sure
Sure.
that we're careful before we make any changes or propose changes.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, just, you know, a, as we say in work, you know, you, you measure twice, so you only have the top ones.
Absolutely. And, you know, the Army Corps is gonna come back to you and say, yeah, this fits with our plan, and it meets our parameters, or not.
If they do.
They are hydrologists, so.
If they do, then that makes life easier.
Right, I'm sure they will, and, um, and but then, but to make it work, you've got to make the changes to the parking lots
I understand.
and restructure Columbus Park for the great benefit of the community, actually.
But, so, uh, I know Tony is, is going to be meeting with Jerry once a month for a couple hours every month.
Yes, we met, uh, a week ago Friday, this, today's only one day, so yes, about seven days, eight, nine days, I don't know. Yes, and he, we agreed that we'd meet once a month for all of our projects.
Okay. So I, 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 he, I, he is near hiring an engineer. Uh, I think it's gonna happen soon, so, you know, this is, you know, flooding is the main goal that we're hiring an engineer for.
Right.
So.
And I, you know, I think it's pretty clear that this actually improves the functionality.
May very well.
Uh, plan, but, you know, let the engineers know. Okay.
Thank you both very much.
You are more than welcome.
Any other questions?
Um, the, well, I, well, you know that I, I thought the, uh, the concept was awesome the moment I saw it. Of course, the experts have to weigh in, and I would love to see if we could just get this before somebody at the Army Corps and tell them, uh, and, and, and get a reaction, even if we don't have a engineer on site.
We have an engineer soon, so why, why would we?
What, what assume, what assume?
It, I would bet nine out of weeks.
All right. Victor? Victor?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank, just to thank them, and to also say, conceptually, I think it's, it's a very good idea, and I think it lines up with what they explained at the Yemeline. So hopefully it works, and, and it all moves forward. So I thank you for doing this and for your, uh, you know, effort to continue being involved, to have this involvement of, of another set of eyes, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
Opening up the culvert is something that the Flood Committee, we brought the Flood Committee months ago, they're on board with opening up, it doesn't, having a tunnel doesn't work, we do not have.
Hang on, Dan, I, I didn't say they were on board.
I didn't say they were on board.
You just said.
Your, with your specific proposal. I said I brought this to the Flood Committee months ago. This is mine.
There's no need to yell.
Regarding, the biggest problem with the culvert is that stuff will get caught in it, we don't have equipment in it. Village has to maintain it, there's no way they can, village can get in and maintain it, particularly in light of what, all the things that happened, and all the things that get, you know, caught in there.
You're referring to the underground.
That is correct.
Yeah, I mean, that is a.
So, so the concept of opening up is a great concept, we can talk about it for some time. Uh, the Corps, I believe, would be receptive to it. The rest of it in terms of lowering it or not, th- those are, those are details, you know, to be worked out in terms of ecology studies. But the purpose of putting, uh, this tweaking on the board for discussion, which I did four weeks ago, was the purpose of just coming up with issues to bring to the Corps for tweaking. I do know that there is at least one other person in the audience who would like to talk to that effect, uh, before I go through the rest of what I'd like to go through.
This isn't for audience members to talk, this is for.
Well, just, just.
Let me finish. This is for board members who were of other committees who were asked to be here, and we don't usually take other people. And you know that.
I understand that.
And if you wanted somebody, if you wanted somebody to be able to speak, you should have recognized it before and sent an email, which is what, what usually happens.
Actually, that's not always the true case. People do, uh, are aware of things, they come to meetings, we do take them out of order, which is we're doing tonight. Um, and I do know that, uh, I know that Spencer's here, uh, who is, uh, has a demonstration he wants to do, uh, and I think we should let him do that, but, but.
But, you know.
Tom, I am talking.
Hold on, just, just as a point of work, if you knew that this was gonna happen, why didn't you let the rest of the board know? Why, why does this have to be a surprise?
It's not a surprise.
It is, I'm surprised.
Well, good.
It might not be a surprise to you and some other people you told, but you didn't let the board know, and you didn't let the administration.
I just found out about it, sir. So I can't, I can't, I can't get into what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, the fact is that we, we have a topic.
Oh, you got one.
Members of the public speak.
Yes.
Just, I'm talking.
Thank you.
The perfect, the, my big concern of putting the tweaking on is, the Corps has said that the elected officials need to present a list to them of things that they, the village would like to consider as tweaking the project that would be helpful, and they will then decide whether they can do that or not. The, uh, the opening of the culvert was sent to them and for, uh, by the Flood Committee months ago. The, uh, but the biggest issue that we have with all of our flooding is the fact that we have a constriction, and the constriction is at the railroad bridge and Halsted Avenue. And that's in all the reports. What isn't shown in the pictures that you were kind enough to develop is that in the peak floods that have been really bad, pre-Ida, the water was anywhere from two to four feet above the arches, i.e., the, it was blocked from going underneath the railroad bridge, not getting to the Halsted Avenue Bridge. Okay, in Ida, it was, it was even higher, higher, and that's the big problem that we have. The, the easy of flooding for minor storms is great, but it's not going to really have the cost benefit that we need for the major storms, which is what we really get. And they're gonna, you know, with, uh, with climate warming, you know, this is, uh, this is going to happen more. So one of the things, when, when the Corps was up here on the different occasions, and I've related this before to the board, that if the board asks us to, or as a, one of the tweaks, to consider changing the constriction, i.e., eliminating the, um, the middle, uh, the middle, um, extension, uh, you know, in between the two arches, opening it up in, uh, and changing the beam restriction on Halsted, that is something that they would be receptive to. They don't know whether they can do it or not, but they're not, the Corps by regulation cannot suggest things. They can react to things. So if we give them a list of things, and I have several, that I think, you know, we should, you know, be doing, one is we should be asking them about the constriction, because we're going to, unless we can get the water out, we're still gonna have backup, we're still gonna have flooding. Uh, the Corps project, as it stands right now, tells you that you're gonna have flooding at the first floor and below. You know, throughout, you know, throughout, uh, the lower areas, including Washington. So it's known. So the, so one of the big things is the constriction, the second is opening the culvert, which I So the, so one of the big things is the constriction, the second is opening the culvert, which I. All heartily endorsed, and have been suggesting now for months, uh, the third. The third type of thing is, uh, the road to nowhere, but that would not, that may not be something that. We need the Corps to do, we probably can do, um, with the, um. County of Westchester, it's funding, if we can get the town, village of Harrison to agree to, uh, move forward on that as a joint effort.
May I say something about that? I I've already met twice with two supervisors of the town, village of Harrison. The most recent one, a couple of months ago, Tony was there, and, uh, they have no interest in doing it. They were a hard no, they think it would hurt them, and they have infrastructure under there that they don't think will move, and they don't think it'll help. So, this has been tried. Twice now. So, you know, I mean, it it it's Harrison's property. And, uh, they have been approached by all residents, they have been approached by me, they've been approached by. Uh, Mayor Rosenbloom, uh, I personally approached the last two Harrison mayors about it. So, you know, let let's, let's do what we can do and, uh, you know, move on.
Down the road, we may need to fashion a stick to persuade them.
I I think you'll find that there's a group in Harrison that would, would welcome it and would help.
Move forward on it. That group is not in office.
Uh, the, uh, so anyway, to the point of this present, what are we doing with this presentation?
The gentleman's here.
This is not.
Who's Mr. Spencer? If if the gentleman's here, let the gentleman present, but in the future, if you have somebody you know you're bringing, don't spring it on us.
Um, can I say something?
Yeah.
I I wanna thank you for doing this, I think we have, you know, and both Tony and Kate said they're not representing their committees. Spencer's here, he's not representing a committee, he's representing a group of people who flood, and. You know, we're looking for all options, so I don't think we should be discussing. Whether or not people can speak, we, people don't usually speak at work session, I, Tom. It is a work session, but people, yeah, I guess, but you know what, we're trying to solve the flooding issue in the village of America.
Then let's have a flood meeting and and do this.
But we're meeting now, and I.
I know, but you know what, I'm sure you knew that Mr. Spencer was coming.
You know what, Tom, I didn't.
Yeah, okay.
And you're putting words in my mouth.
I'm sorry.
But I'm happy to see him, and.
My question was, what are we, what are we doing with the?
I. I think, I'm speaking, and I think Tom wants to wait till we have a village engineer, I, we, we heard from the Army Corps. They have hydrologists studying this, if we have ideas that we can recommend to the Army Corps, they have the option of saying, yeah, we'll study it. No, we won't, but they're not gonna do anything till we recommend it, so I think it behooves us to get them that list.
So, and and secondly, to what Nora is saying, it has to come from this board. It can't come just from the committee or whatever, sending stuff down or meeting with them. It, they, they've made it very clear, it has to come from the elected officials, and what I would propose. Is having a meeting with the top people from the Corps, as well as the D E C and, um. The county, because they are the stakeholders that are part of the Army Corps project, and they have to agree to this, and that is how it works.
I think what we do is, we take the recommendations and we send them, uh, give them to our liaison, who is a village manager. He takes it to the Corps and they say yea or nay, or what we like, and to keep it simple, let's, let's not open up a whole, uh, another way to drag it out and.
It's not a question of dragging it out, actually, it is, it is to move forward on a more expedited basis. Because they will, cannot do it until it comes from them, and they would, they are willing to meet. Next week, or whatever you want, uh, at a work session, uh, and go through what the, what.
How do you know they are?
What, how do you know, cause they, they talk with me as well as anybody else.
Oh, yeah, what, you, so you're, 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 you're going around, I would say, I don't talk to them.
They call me and I talk.
They call you.
I answer the phone.
Oh, oh, come on, Dan.
Yes, I do.
Come on. But this is the problem, this is the problem, this, there's gonna be too many cooks in the soup. You know what, we talked about this, we talked about having one voice, and already, you know, you you wanna be the voice. And 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 that's the problem, we have a village manager who is supposed to be working with the Army Corps of Engineers. As the, uh, Deputy Mayor pointed out, we should have the village manager. Assess those ideas along with the village engineer who will soon be hired. This, this to me, i- it is, is why this board gets in trouble, because we, we don't know. What is our responsibility and what isn't our responsibility, you should not be talking to the Army Corps of Engineers.
I will answer my phone and I will talk with anybody.
Calling you, Dan, don't, 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 don't make it like that, please, stop.
You know what, Tom?
You know, just, just, let, let's, let's just stop the nonsense, I know there's an election tomorrow, but let's just stop the nonsense. No, no, that's not happening.
If we're gonna stop nonsense, let's really stop the nonsense.
Yes, but you know.
Tom, let's really stop the nonsense, the reality is that Dan has worked with the Army Corps for years. It's not unlikely that he aren't.
Business, which is why it's a conflict of interest.
Not a conflict of interest, and it's not unlikely that the Army Corps would call him because they know him, you're accusing Dan of lying, I don't think.
Corps is not calling.
You know what, this is a ridiculous conversation.
If the Army Corps is calling him, he should be saying, I'm not the one you should be talking to.
What, we, the.
He has never done a, a flood mitigation plan like this, he, he's done people's docks and arenas, which is a big different thing, Nora.
Tom, the Board of Trustees can make recommendations to the Army Corps.
I understand.
If you look at the regs, it's how it works, so.
Understand.
I don't know why we're fighting about turf or about message or messenger, let's get the recommendations and let's make them to. The Army Corps, let's stop being the problem and be part of the solution.
Yes.
And let's hear from Spence.
Yeah, you know what, hold on, hold on, I'm fine with Mr. Spence talking, but, but you know what? If you think that that's the way it works, you don't know how this government works.
Oh, Tom, please don't go there.
You don't, because individuals should not be doing that, individual elected officials. Should not be, you're trying to get their individual opinion.
Tom, I have spent my entire career working with state and federal agencies, please don't tell me that I don't know how government works, I'm not putting up.
I'm sorry, you, you haven't, you, you haven't exhibited in this instance, if you think that that's okay, that's a problem.
It's a problem from your vantage point, I don't think it's a problem from the majority of the board.
Uh, yeah, of course, because you, you, you like having, you know, the back door.
You, you love to interrupt, you really do. You know.
Thank you.
And it will be looked at.
Thanks, thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing it, and, and, and. Spencer, go ahead.
With that warm welcome.
You might wanna go to the table.
This is a point that's just been going on and on, because I don't know if there's really an answer to what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Because it keeps changing, so, that being said.
If you're not gonna be at the podium, you might wanna use this microphone or.
Yeah, you gotta be recorded.
The public can't hear you.
But use, use that microphone, it's a lot easier.
Thank you. Again, like I was saying, I don't know if there's any real answer to this problem, but the main concern is to get the water from one side. To the other. I agree with Dan, just because if you look at it, it's logical, we have fourteen feet of water down the flats, trying to go through. A small bridge, so just can do it, so, in my opinion, that needs to be addressed first. But all I'm saying is, you know, if you. But. If you take this. And this is our bridge, and you have to admit, there was trillions of gallons of water down there. This is what you're trying to do with that bridge, try to get that water out. Very slow process, we, I had, try to check, I have two businesses. So, that being said, okay, that's one, two, if we could open that bridge up. Now, I mean, that's not very elegant, but that's, that's the fact, we need to open that bridge up. And if it could be done, if it's a possibility, I feel that that should be looked at.
Yeah.
And I know it's a big added expense, but it is the main, as I see it, the main problem, moving that water. So I don't wanna take up a lot of your time, because I know you're on a schedule.
Appreciate that.
No, I wasn't supposed to be here, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's right, it's not your fault.
But, again, I mean, there's so many people that are being put underwater every time, so.
Mr. Spencer, and thank you, and, you know, you, you might very well be right, but as I said before, all this stuff. Needs to be evaluated by both our engineer and the Army Corps engineer.
And I'm sure it will be.
Thank you, thank you very much.
First, the purpose of this, of W having been put on the agenda, because I was the one who put it on the agenda. Is to try and have the board come up. To move forward. This, this is what I would like to do, um, I, you know, having, if you have an engineer that's hired tomorrow. Uh, it's still gonna take time for him to evaluate it, and bottom line is. We, at the moment, we know conceptually more about what's going on in this village than anybody coming into the village that doesn't know. Doesn't mean that we have the answers, but we know, we know what many of the issues are, so I would like to make a motion. That Board of Trustees meet with, uh, the Army Corps and the, uh, state and the. County representatives. And recommend the following tweaks and others that may be added as, as we go forward. One is to, uh, review the, uh, construction at both the, um. Railroad Bridge and, uh, Holstead Avenue Bridge, and second is to, or third, depending on how you. Classify those two, uh, and third, uh, third is to open up the culvert so we'd be open or daylighted. Because without that, there's no way that that's going to work, it's gonna get caught, and we don't have the equipment. Uh, or the manpower, or the safety approach to clean them. So I, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, as a point of order. We usually do is put items on a work session with a resolution. We decide whether that resolution then goes to a work session, from a work session to a regular session, and then it's voted on at a regular session. That's how it's always worked, uh, except when, you know, when, when the majority seems to wanna really do something, then it, then, you know. It, it, it happens, you know, uh, willy nilly, uh, so I, I, once again, this is procedurally incorrect. Uh, and I think we're on the cusp of having a village engineer, and I would like him to be involved in these discussions. Him or her, to be involved in these discussions.
We, will, will we know in two weeks?
I think you'd, yeah.
Well.
When, when these things move forward, if they do, for the determination of whether they will be looked at and looking at them. The village engineer, and everybody else who wants to be involved, will be, be involved, that's not the. Your issue is the conceptual issue moving forward. The Corps is moving ahead. It seems to me that their, their approach is, they would like to have. The Board of, the elected officials, tell them what types of tweaks they would like to have. So that they can then evaluate whether they can do it or not, and without delaying the core project. And without creating any rest of the funding of the project.
So I, I would make a motion that we, um, we create a resolution for the agenda for two weeks from today, our next meeting's in two weeks. Where we, where we have, we ask for a meeting with the Army Corps, and maybe by that time we'll have an engineer on staff, and that we. Include some of the proposed tweaks that we have, and figure out a way of authorizing. The Army Corps to look at other tweaks that doesn't necessarily require board approval, but requires a recommendation from. Our village engineer, see if that works, you know, they may want, but.
For village staff, six village staff.
Staff, they may want, that, that may not satisfy the Army Corps, but let's start, let's do that with a start, because I think the fact, the sooner we can get. Anybody's good ideas that are, I mean, really good ideas, not, you know, there are some ideas that may not be so great, but. Ideas to the Army Corps for evaluation, they're doing these studies now.
Since you've changed it to have it be by regular procedure, I will second that motion. What do we call that? Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi. Thank you, Nora, good proposal.
Thank you, everybody, for your ideas.
Thanks, and thanks, everybody, I think that's, that's the work to move.
Did you?
What are you here for? Oh, just for, okay, they use a particular item on the agenda, okay.
Thank you for voting up Brady.
I think he's just missed us.
Um, you know, we have on. On the attendees, Mr. Neil Desay, who is presenting to us tonight about the, uh.
Oh, you can see the attendees.
What?
The attendees aren't up there.
Yeah, I can see it from here, uh, so. What, what, what items that?
It's one R, Mayor.
One R, okay, status update, a comprehensive plan, we have Neil on, and we are, we're paying Neil, so let's talk to Neil. Mr. Des- Desay. Neil?
Yes, I am here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excellent, um, yeah, I wasn't able, I, I didn't know if I was gonna be on, the agenda wasn't on the website, uh, but, uh. But I'm here, uh, and, hi there, and.
Neil, welcome, but the agenda is fine, so the people don't get confused, I just checked it, I'm aligned, it's been aligned, working.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is important, because we need to have it available.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
So you have the, uh, my, my memo that I had, uh, um, sent, uh, last time. Let me just, uh, open. Uh, I, I actually switched, I just switched my cellphone, um, so I won't be able to. Uh, open that up on my cellphone, I do have it up on my screen, and, uh, yeah, basically I switched to my cellphone, I was about to, uh. Anyways, I, I'm unfortunate, I can't, I can't project it right now, uh, but if everybody has it in front of them, I can just quickly update and, and on the process. Uh, the, essentially, I, I put together, uh, a, a project schedule. And that's the second page of the, of the, of the memo, it's the attachment, two thousand twenty-two project schedule. And it, it, in, in, you know, in, in the, long story short, I think we, we. This, this is gonna be a busy few months, I've gotten in touch with most of the committees and boards, um, already. Um, and, um, in anticipation, the planning board has already reached out to me before I reached out to them. And I'll be meeting with them on July thirteenth, um, so they're actually currently reviewing the November twenty-two, November twenty twenty draft. That, uh, was posted on Plan V O M, but essentially, I've been, I've been working with the Public Information Officer. Uh, since the launch, uh, the relaunch, which was last Friday, that's when the new notice got sent out to everybody that. The Conference of Plan Update process is restarting, and, uh, the Plan V O M dot org website was updated. Unfortunately, I, I had, unfortunately, put the incorrect email address for, for people who wanted to. Provide comments, but I, I corrected that quickly, and I did receive, uh, some messages from the planning board and, and other committees, and so. I've, uh, started getting in touch with them, um, I think the, uh, really what's, what's important. Oh, thank you for putting that up on the screen, so the second page is just, this is just all the little details that go into. The, the, the communications of this aspect, so that's really, um, it's important, you can see that, there's a lot of steps that go into. Uh, putting together a communications campaign essentially, uh, to reach out to people, and so this is just, just, just shows you the, the steps that. Uh, the Public Information Officer and I were, were, went through to, to launch the project on the seventeenth. Um, and you can see also, as far as the, on that also, that same schedule, the, the, the community engagement schedule. Uh, between, between now and, uh, and July, uh, meeting, this, meeting with as many of the different committees and boards. Uh, as we can during that time, I know some of them aren't meeting in July and August, and I'll make arrangements, um, with the liaisons to. Uh, see about meeting with staff and, and the committees if possible. But, so that's just what the, that's just the details of it, really what's, what's most important is that, that. But, so that's just what the, that's just the details of it. Really, what's, what's most important is the, the, the two, twenty-twenty, sorry, the twenty-twenty-two project schedule. And, and we. In, in short, it's going to be, we anticipate, I anticipate probably a draft that's going to be able to be completed by September. And. It'd be called the Snare Twenty-Two Draft and possibly in October. Final draft and public hearing for adoption. So, so all these little, all of those little mini steps fed and feeds into this project schedule. And that's what, that's, that's the, that's the, the process that I'm, we're going with right now. But as I said, the planning board has already reached out, I'm meeting with them on July thirteenth, I'm having a conversation with the Flood Med mitigation committee. I think the comprehensive plan is, depending on how things come together, the conference, you know, we've always, of the, the, the. The Army Corps engineer project has always been acknowledged as the foundation project, but now the village has to build on that. And the comprehensive plan could be a good place to depict. The different ways that the village would like to build on the, on the Army Corps projects in a very, you know, brief way. And so that's something that, you know, I hope to. Explore with the Flood Mitigation Enviroser Committee as well as the B O T as, as we move along. And so, yeah, if there's any questions or suggestions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody on the board have questions, suggestions?
I, well, I also say thank you. I have one question and it's quite about this, it's sort of about the neighborhood zoning that we've talked about. Yeah. We've had on our agenda, and I don't know whether this is. Worth adding now, but a zone change to convert seven lots that are on the border of a multifamily, and it's sort of like, it's like. It has to do with whether.
Old Post Road.
Old Post Road, and it has to do with, with whether or not the zoning change that happened in nineteen sixty-eight. Was the, was the right change for that neighborhood? Is that something that should be folded in before we get to it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think it's always been something that. We talked about even several years ago, you know, I had looked, I have a copy of the petition. And it's even several years ago, we said it's, it's best looked at through the comprehensive plan, and so. That is, while it doesn't show the, you know, this, this schedule doesn't show that level of detail. That is certainly a piece I had anticipated, having, you know, myself or one of my other colleagues look at more closely. And come up with some, some, you know, based on the petition and, and things come up with the direction for that.
Okay, good. Thanks, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else want to talk to Neil? I'd like to see this moving.
Been a long time.
Thank you, my friend. Hopefully, you're saying we'll get, we'll get the, we'll get the final draft by September?
Well, not the final draft, I think we'll be beginning the next draft by September and then a, a final draft in October, according to the schedule.
So we could adopt it?
Yes. Oh, actually, October is the anticipated. Final draft and adoption, public hearings for adoption, yeah, yeah.
So is it?
Well, if we're getting in October, we can adopt it, you know, the night we get it.
Oh, right, 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 right. It's the, I guess I should, yeah, I need to kind of probably spell that, because I, what I essentially show is. I think we're, I think. I think this is a similar kind of cognitive, you know, thing I had last time, because, so essentially, the September draft is, is the, the one which we're. Having the two to three public review period, and then we revise that, and then we have the final. You know, vetted document, and, and that's what we're going to adopt. And. So I need to look at the kind of procedurally, whether, whether, right, whether this is. I need to relook at this to see, make sure, make sure I'm, I've spelled it out. Procedurally, that it's, and that it can be done in October, in the month of October.
You have to go through a secret process on this.
Oh, right, that's true, the secret as well, yeah, yeah, the secret needs to be added to that as well.
Yes, with the entire.
Yeah. So, um, as I did with previous, I'll, I'll continue to kind of update the schedule. And, and certainly at, at, at a minimum right now, I think just updating it to include also what, what the. Mr. Sarnoff had said about the secret process as well, just so it's complete.
Process due to the timeline.
And the timeline, yeah. Yeah. It will, it will.
So we're talking about twenty twenty-three then, when we finally get down?
No, no.
No? Well, well.
So I, I just want to make sure, Neil, that you're, part of what you're doing is. The secret process, whether it requires.
Yeah, as, I mean, we've always been in the assumption that it's not going to require E A S, but I'm going to have Sarah Brown, my colleague. Be the person who. Who, who, you know, who, who reviews, reuse it with that, to that end. Secret, but we, we've always been on the assumption in the previous, at least the previous drafts, that it would be. The, the short form E A F. But I will, you know, I'll, we'll. Confirm that for sure.
Okay, so you should just work it to your schedule.
So.
Yeah.
Have the, whatever secret applies, you can, is necessary.
Yeah.
With the report.
I mean.
And you should, excuse me, you should work in time for the board. The board's not just going to adopt that, too, what you do, maybe.
Absolutely.
You need to build in some time for.
Secret.
Their review and for any changes.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and you're absolutely, apologies, yeah, that's, that's, that's something I absolutely need to add to this.
Does it need consistency?
County, yeah, there's that step, so I, I can build in, I guess I, I, I kind of really abbreviated the schedule a little too much. And I can put in the more, they're, they're important, these procedural steps, so, and, and I'll, I'll. I'll, I'll update that with, with the, you know, the more fine, fine grain detail, which, which. Make sure, which, so you have confidence that all the different steps.
Right, thank you. My, my question is, does it need a consistency determination when H C Z M say?
I think the answer is it will likely, the kid doesn't know exactly what the proposal is until it's out, I suspect it will. Consistency review.
Yeah. His decision is ours, but they need a review. Thanks. Recommend.
I will, I will send the, the board a revised, a more detailed and revised schedule. You know, as soon as I, as soon as I can get, do that.
Thank you, Neil.
Sure.
Any other questions for you? Thanks for stopping by.
I guess, is there anything you need from us?
I think. Not, there's some, there's some administrative matters, I show on the project schedule, those are, are, those are more. Fine tuned, I can, I can, I mean, I guess, I guess, that is an important question in terms of. Messages that I receive at the email address contacted Plan V O M, you know, prior, you know, in the past, I would. We had the, the village planner C C'd on everything that. Was received and together, you know, usually the, the village planner would reply, if it required to reply. So far, the only comments have been about. You know, the, the, the committees and boards reaching out to me to, to meet. I haven't received any open-ended comments or questions, but I guess the question is, who should I, who in the village? I certainly don't want to respond unilaterally. But I'll be receiving these con, these, these emails from public, should they come in? And I want to make sure somebody in the village is at least, at a minimum copied on it or. And, and it should anything need a response. You know, determine.
I, I think the village manager's office.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure they're, 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 they're copied on any. Any, any emails that come in from that, and that's good, so that's, that's really the, the, the only question, which I think the board, after the board for now. And.
Also be, you know, I think it would also, Dan, maybe you can direct me if this is not proper, but. I think it would also be good to put a section on the. Website for the comprehensive plan, and as comments come in, they should be posted and the answers go back. For the people to be involved and others can, can see what's going on and what falls off.
Oh, yeah, so, so you're saying, just because I, I was a little cracking up the sound, but, so, you're saying posting the, the, the comments that come in?
Those are the comments that come in and the answers that go back.
And answers, sure.
In other words, try to keep the public more fully involved and more fully informed.
Got it. Yeah, I, I do that internally, but I can certainly do that externally as, as well.
Yeah.
Neil, that's really up to our website, not you.
Mr. Mr. Desai has his website that's mutated for Plan V O M.
For us?
Yeah, so I think that might be the, might be the appropriate form to keep all comprehensive plan related materials. You know, one, one location set in year two and three. So that's part of our website, or that's a separate one?
So. Yeah, it's a separate website that I had created three years ago for the project, plan V O M dot O R G.
Then we need to put on our website to go to that website.
You have a link on our website. We do have a link. Yeah.
So things like that, I coordinate, I made sure to coordinate with Mr. Ingenito about, you know, making sure that, that, any, any.
Okay. I thank you, Neil. Victor has a question.
I just want to thank, thank you and urge Neil to, let's try to keep to the schedule. If you have any issues, come back to the board, I'm sure. Village manager, all the boards will be supportive. It's already six years in the making of the update. The update was triggered when I joined the board. And it was because I realized it had been five years after the first one, and that's what it was called, so it's been now eleven years. And it was prepared like two thousand eight, more or less, so. It, it is, it is really necessary to, to finish the job, so let, let's, if you need anything else, just come back to us and feel, you have full support.
Sure, thank you, thank you so much.
Let, let Jerry know if you need anything else, so you don't have to keep coming back to us.
Sure.
We only meet every two weeks.
Great.
And we only meet once a month. Okay.
All right.
Have a good evening.
No, no, not at all. I'm just at my desk, I just couldn't switch back to the, to my computer, so, thank you.
Okay. We have a bunch of stuff that has to be done for tonight, but let's go right to the top of old business. The A, B, and C are all about removing authority from the village mayor. And these would have to be. Subject of mandatory referendum, referendi, is that the word?
Referenda, right.
Referenda.
Referenda.
But my question is, when would referenda be held?
November.
How would that be?
Well. Because what we talked about with Bob was the, the basic memo was that there's this conflict, I mean, Bob's the lawyer, but. I think I can explain it. Lay, lay these terms.
Let's have Bob explain, because he is the lawyer.
Getting your exercise tonight.
Just so you know, I switched over there, it has nothing to do with Dan, not wanting to sit next to Dan, just because there was a problem.
Can I, Kate?
To my Kate.
Can I, Kate?
Thank you. So here's the fundamental problem with this that I've explained to you, as you've talked about. The. General municipal law specifies that if you adopt. A resolution or law subject to referendum, actual referendum. On a. Sorry, I don't remember the timeframes, but you adopted a certain number of days before the general election.
Sixty.
Sixty days before the general election. You have to have a special election. But the election law says that if you adopt it, if you don't adopt it. By August third or so. You can't get on the general election now, and you know, you want it to be on the general election. So it's, it's a clear conflict, it's a conundrum. You can. You could wait to do it in September, you recall, five years ago, there was a mandatory referendum that was done late August, early September. Then you can't get it on the ballot, the general election. You can adopt it now, or sometime before. August, before August, like August third, of course, leaving time for getting it to the central state. But then it would be subject to. The challenge on the ground that the. Referendum should be, should not be on the general election day. And, and I don't know how to. As I've explained to you, get that square, square peg in the round hole.
And you wrote away to the Attorney General.
Correct. The first of the Board of Elections, Council of Board of Elections, who despite our making several requests has not responded.
So. This is one of those situations where if you do it, you, you know, unless you want to actually have a special election. And put the community through that, the. Mechanism for putting on the November election would be. Possibly fatal flaw.
That's, that's.
It would be a target for whoever didn't want to have the.
It might, and it might, or might, it might, and, but because it really, I mean, the, the, the conundrum, that's a good word for it. Is because. Village law assumes that village elections are not in November, so village law assumes that village elections are in typically March. But could be some other month, and so.
I mean, it's a little different, that this used to work. This worked until they changed the election law a couple of years ago to require.
So this isn't about village laws.
Get, that, that, anything on the November ballot.
Right.
Get there in early August.
And it, but, but it, but if you had had, if we were, if, and that is because of early voting. So they are, they need to have ballots done earlier because of early voting, so that, so the legislature didn't think this through.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's early voting, I, I don't mean to correct this, it's, it's really, the whole schedule changed because of military vote. If this is not a military issue, it's one ballot. So it changed because military ballots had to go out in the middle of August, the third week of August.
For early voting, that's, yeah, yeah, but that was, that, it's all those January two thousand nineteen reforms, all this stuff. Got changed, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't perfectly thought out. But, you know, two, a year, a year and a half ago, and more than a year ago, we had adopted. Passed laws adopting two resolutions that were supposed to, referendum that were supposed to be on. For November twenty twenty-one, and for whatever reason, they were never transmitted by the village to the Board of Elections, so they weren't on the ballot, so those are two of them. And there's a third one that's being proposed, and. You know, I, I, I think these are important for democracy, and I think we should try to do this. I'm very.
What's the genesis of this, with, with these?
So there's the first two, the first one was the removal authority for the Planning and Zoning Board members, and that's the referendum. That Bob refers to from two thousand sixteen, so at that point. The mayor appointed Planning and Zoning Board members, and the board in two thousand sixteen decided that that, that it should be the entire Board of Trustees. So that went to referendum in November of two thousand sixteen, but. The, the, the removal power wasn't harmonized, so typically. When somebody has appointment authority, the same body has removal, removal authority. And this came up because there was a proposal to remove someone from the planning board. And it, the question was, who had the authority, and it turned out that it was the mayor. And what could have happened is if the mayor had done their, after a process, it's not, it's not just an automatic. Removal, but it turned out that, you know, the mayor could have removed that person, and the rest of the board could have simply reappointed that person. So it seems that the normal course of events is to have. The remove, the appointment authority and the removal authority harmonized, so that was the genesis of that. And the appointment authority for the village clerk treasurer, this is Victor's bailiwick, he's probably better at explaining this than I am. That's your cue, Victor.
What's the cue for?
The, the appointment, the. Clerk treasurer, I explained planning, clerk treasurer.
I think it was.
Yeah, my, my question is, what's the rationale of wanting to do this?
Yeah. I just, to address a couple of points.
Well, well, I'm.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So if Victor doesn't want, I mean, the clerk treasurer, and I'll explain it, but I think Victor has, has discussed this more articulated than I have. Okay, he doesn't want it, so I'm going to try and stumble my way through it, so the. Appointment authority for the clerk treasurer is conflicted because it. The clerk treasurer, there's a point, there's an appointment authority for the clerk, and there's an appointment authority for the treasurer, and they're different, and we. The clerk treasurer, there's a point, there's an appointment authority for the clerk, and there's an appointment authority for the treasurer, and they're different, and we have a combined clerk treasurer. So it seems like it's more appropriate instead of having the mayor appoint the clerk treasurer that the entire board appoints the clerk treasurer. And that was the genesis for that referendum that I believe was the law was adopted in twenty twenty. But it again did not get to the Board of Elections last year. Not because of this.
Okay, and the last one is.
The last one is. Right. So if, so yes, that's you. So if if a trustee resigns or does cannot sell their term. Instead of having the mayor appoint, it would be the entire Board of Trustees that that appoint somebody for the. There are the entire, yeah, the remaining, the remaining four trustees.
Okay, great. Um, okay, go ahead.
So this is just all, this is all just boards to, I mean, this is just stuff. There's nobody in 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 the village clamoring for this to happen.
Well, there there was a lot of discussion about it two years ago, and we have these public hearings and decided to adopt the law. And I think the reason we know about this problem now is because. When municipalities had to adopt. A law subject to permission of referendum to. To to not have, having, it was around the marijuana laws. That's when this whole thing was discovered that there was a gap. And so nobody really thought about it. And then. When did you think about it?
When when you tried to do this in February.
You thought about in February. You didn't, you didn't, nobody thought about it. This, nobody thought about it in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one when. We were adopting the first two local laws regarding clerk treasurer and planning.
So this, so what we're deciding, I don't mean to, but but this doesn't seem like a. We're gonna go do it or not, right? So if we're gonna. We we're gonna try to approve, uh, uh, schedule it for the November election. That's that's.
If that's your goal. You have to do it, ready to go to the Board of Elections by the first couple of days of August.
And.
I I don't see, I don't see us taking the timeline. This is a seat like a waste.
And that could be challenged. I mean, because I I can tell you right now, this is about the integrity of the mayor's office. Which I I am not going to hold in perpetuity, but I I do believe that there's a reason. That the village law. That has been in New York State for centuries gives mayors certain powers. Because they wanted mayors to, you know, have some form of authority differentiated them from the trustees. This board has been working hard to take all of that prerogative and. Leeway away, which frankly was given to people who become mayor by the votes. And this is, you know, the people of the community. Having served a long time as a trustee and having served a long time as a town councilman. The people of the community, when something happens, would like to talk and would like to interact. And they call and they email and they text the mayor. And, you know, because that that is what, you know, the the office calls for. You're you're the face of the community. And with that comes some, you know, responsibility and some prerogatives. Now. I think going back, thinking about it, and when I reflect upon the 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 hearing to remove Cindy Goldstein. I think that, you know, the more time goes by. I would have done that differently. I would not have allowed anybody to testify if they weren't swearing test by testifying. And sworn testimony, because it 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 wasn't, it became a public opinion death. And, you know, a lot of that was organized by political factors. And, you know, there there was definitely politics used there. And, you know, it it. It became, you know, looking at from possibly, you know, an objective position of having to make that decision, it became. Unseemly, to tell you the truth. And it 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 didn't allow for rational discourse. It it pitted community members and then sometimes turned them against volunteers in this community. And it 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 was frankly, would not have been. A good move for the whole Board of Trustees. I have watched a whole Board of Trustees try and make decisions. At hearings for police department back in the. Two thousand four, two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand four, and it was a mess. It was an absolute mess. And there's a reason that, you know, the the law gives people certain. Responsibilities, you know, and I've asked this question before. Has this been researched in other areas? Are other people doing any of this? So, you know, to ask the question that they ask a Passover, why is, you know, and to paraphrase it. Why is this village different than all others? Why is this village going to operate in a different fashion than the other five hundred and something villages? In New York State. And, you know, I I think that, you know, that there there are, you know, people that have resentments at the board, at the mayor. And that should not mean that we change our form of government. You know, I I know that the genesis of a couple of these was actually the Democratic Committee. The first time I ever heard about. Removing the power to appoint a trustee was at a Democratic Committee meeting. And, you know, so this, there there's there's no, you know. Governmental, good government thing here. This is, we're 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 jumping in where other people haven't gone. And we're going to figure out whether it was right or wrong.
Well, we adopted two of these. We adopted local laws. They should have been on the, they should have been on the ballot November, and they weren't.
They weren't.
So I I. And in the town, under in under town law.
But this isn't the town.
Okay, but you just you but just quote, you just quoted about, you just. And you said people want to be in charge, talk to the person who's in charge. I think these are more democratic proposals. I think I'm I'm sorry that we don't, we, you know, we already have this conversation. We decided in Jan, at the end of January, that these three things would be on for public hearings on on February fourteenth. And then Bob raised the issue of the timing and thought we should delay it. My, I'm sorry, we we thought we would have, we we have the two local laws for the clerk treasurer and for the planning and zoning board members. Because we had those drafted and they were revised. There was no local law as we had asked for the filling. Vacancies for unexpired terms of trustees. We thought we would have that in February. For whatever reason, we didn't because of the timing. So we don't have that tonight. So unfortunately, we don't, I mean, I I we don't have that to vote on, to put, to schedule. We don't have it so that we can schedule a public hearing.
Also, it's a public. We should have a public hearing, because I think these are terrible ideas.
Okay.
And we can, and we can get people in here to 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 wear that. It's a weak face, a weak mayor, former government. But it's not weak enough for this board. This board can't even deal with the weak mayor. So they want to weaken it even more. It's just stunning to me. The mayor's weak enough.
So, but but because of the timing, we have to break our procedure and schedule a public hearing for it tonight. For 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 July eleventh, because it has been on the agenda, you know, effectively since January twenty fourth. It was on the agenda to schedule a public hearing on. On February.
Without it being on the agenda.
Well, because Tom, you know what? For whatever reason, you win. I guess you win. I do want to do it because I think that. If we do it for August, isn't it against procedure for us to adopt two local laws and not have them? What happened?
It was a mistake.
But that's, but it, okay, that's a pretty big mistake. And I'm not saying it was a mistake, but we have to correct the mistake. And this was put back on. I've tried to put this back on a couple of times. It didn't get on. I think in order to affect to wait these two local laws and to get on the ballot, we have to. Tonight, schedule public here, two public hearings for Jan, February, Ju- July the eleventh. And we have two laws in front of us to do it. We don't have the one for filling vacancies of unexpired terms because that didn't get drafted. That was also a mistake. I mean, everybody makes mistakes. That's not.
I got a question. If the office of mayor wanted to challenge these laws, the village would have to pay for an attorney. Because our interests are obviously different.
I think that's correct, but I'm not. Not ready to.
Could you please do research on it?
I can guarantee you that it will get challenged in court. So that's, we're just buying litigation.
And I'm not saying I'm gonna do it, but I just want to know what my options are.
If you don't, someone will.
I don't know if someone else will have standing. I think the only person standing would be me. But, you know, people, people in this community.
You could challenge it on the on the fact that the the procedure wasn't followed for the referendum. You don't think in charge of the merits, right?
I think the question you're asking there is if you challenge it. Does the village pay for your counsel fee?
That's correct.
If somebody else challenges, obviously the village will defend it. But. The question is, you challenge. Now, five years ago, the mayor did challenge, and the village did pay his counsel.
No, they paid lose fees, not the mayor's fees. I think, I think, I don't think so. I think that, I think they weren't.
Either way, could you, could you research the issue? Because I'm not a man of great means.
But the reality is, in order, we have to, we would have to schedule the public, we would have to schedule the public hearing. Tonight, for two, for two weeks from now. That's how it has to work. We can't wait two weeks to do it unless we have, unless we decide to. Hold the public hearing at our second meeting in July, which is usually just an accounts payable meeting. It's not, it's usually a minor items meeting. So we could do that. I mean, we certainly have time.
I think you should do that. Now, and then, you know, I would have nothing to say, and I wouldn't have to go to court. Because I don't really want to. And then. Let me finish. And then we could, you know, if you want to have an election, we'll have an election. I've always said, but a great store in the voters of the village of America.
I I don't think anybody. Who lives in this village cares about this. I I mean, maybe. Well, yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah. And I think the idea that we're we're gonna spend our time on this arcane. Procedural, a structural thing that that only matters to a few people and probably. Continue to run up big legal bills. It's just going to annoy people, and rightfully so. There's other stuff we should be doing. I think this is a waste of time. I think we should walk away from it.
I think we should have the public hearings because I think we should make good on what we did two years ago, and I think that we need. So I would, I I think it should be on for our July eleventh meeting for public hearings on July twenty fifth.
So.
I support, I support that. I I second that because I think we've been waiting too much time on this, but we at least. Agreed that this should be put in front of the public. And and that, and I think that was the greatest consensus. So let's put it on for everybody to apply.
If if this is where you think we should spend village time and resources, that that's fine, as long as it's done procedurally, I guess. I I would rather not, because I would feel if it was, if it was done wrong procedurally. I would feel, I would, hold it, even if I get it, if you pass it in the end of July.
That's, I think that might be, if we do it July twenty fifth, is there time to get it to the Board of Elections? Well, can't we overnight mail it to the Secretary? It has to get to the Board of Elections by November, it's sixty days before November eighth. So, you know. I mean.
Fifty days.
Sixty days, sixty.
It gets, let me just hear that again. Gets the Board of Elections sixty days before the general election. Is that right? No, that's not right. No, 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 no. It's got to get to the Board of Elections ninety days before the general election. If you don't have, if you pass the law sixty days before. If you pass the law sixty days before the general elections, you have to have a special election.
I can answer that question if you give me a few minutes to look at the memo.
Go ahead. I I I looked at it a few times, and I think that's right. It's sixty days. Sixty days before the general election. It has to be special, actually.
I mean, I think the problem is the Board of Elections needs it roughly the day you pass it. And that's just not practical. With getting the military ballots ready in time for early voting. Or out in time.
About this, this could be changed back with three votes after the election, right?
Correct.
So could, so, you know, so could removal of the planning, those are anybody numbers. Well, can we just say we're gonna put it on for for scheduling public hearings? Well, I know, Tom, but you know, you're not always going to be the mayor, so, you know.
I know, and actually, I I care about who becomes mayor after me. And I care about who becomes mayor after him or her. You know, I I care about the office. And I'm not, I'm not a person who wants to be mayor for.
Just doing everything by committee is just not a good idea.
You know what? Democracy is messy.
This didn't come for the genesis from the the public. This this came from the the. The the village of the American dams.
I I'm glad that you know where my ideas come from, Tom. It came.
For mayor, that was the first time this was ever posed to me.
Okay, maybe it was the first time it was posed to you. I've thought about this for a long time, and by the time you were interviewed for mayor, whatever that, when was that?
Valentine's Day or something like that.
Twenty twenty one, we'd already adopted the clerk treasurer measure, and we were in the process of adopting the planning and zoning board.
How you doing, Bob? You still have a executive session.
We have a lot of memos.
We're not going to get to any of this stuff here.
So I guess here's the question. We could, we could. We can either schedule the hearing, schedule the hearings, seems, we haven't heard from Dan, so if Dan says no, there's no point going forward, so. So either we schedule, I'm looking at the calendar, either we schedule the public, either we move it to tonight's agenda. And schedule the public hearing tonight for the eleventh, or we risk. Moving it till the eleventh for a public hearing on scheduling a public hearing for. The twenty fifth of July and risk not. Complying with the time requirements to get it on the ballot.
When you'll have to do that is make a motion to add a reason. I I but, you know. I I don't want any more lectures about procedure. Yeah, we do.
We do, but.
Yeah, we, we're gonna, I'm gonna go through the regular meeting agenda there.
But there is.
May have read this a few times. So it has to be past ninety days before, it has to be to the Board of Elections ninety days before the election.
No, that's.
To the Board of Elections.
That's not what the Board of Elections. That's not what the Board of Elections said to us when I called them. They said the begin, they said the beginning of, of August.
Yeah, which is just what he said, which is August. Okay, so when we look, so we pull up the law.
That, that's ninety days. Okay, so I'm gonna, so I'm gonna make a motion that we put it, let's, let's end our misery, that we put it. That we, we suspend our procedure, we move it.
You have to do it at the regular meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm gonna make the motion that we put these three items on for regular meeting tonight. The problem is, we don't have a copy of the law.
Then you don't.
That we were, so we can't put that one on, that we were supposed to have on. And I'm not saying, I mean, we, we, I, I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody. We were gonna have the, 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 the revised laws on February the fifteenth, fourteenth. But we didn't, because of the timing issue, we have the, the two that we adopted previously were revised. But the, uh, the vacancy for unexpired terms of trustees wasn't. So. I guess we just do the two that we were gonna do last November. And we have the public hearings on July the eleventh to make sure no one isn't too much of a hurry to get it to the Board of Elections by. August the eighth.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Bob. Is Bob saying that?
He didn't say.
We could do it on the, that we could do it on the twenty-fifth?
Bob, you're a pine honest?
So, Election Day, Election Day is November eighth. Three months before election, or eight, is August eighth. As long as the, all documentation gets to the, uh, Board of Elections. Before August eighth. It will be on the ballot in November.
Okay, but then. That, that raises the question about New York State law. Okay, but the other law says that if you pass it, you have to have a referendum in sixty days.
That's, I mean, that's the rub. So the rub is.
That's, that's the procedural challenge.
That's the procedural challenge. So, and, and actually, I just looked at the calendar accounting function, and we have till August tenth. So I propose that we have all three laws on a regular meeting in two weeks. For public hearing on November, on July twenty-fifth. That's my, that's my recommendation.
That's fine. Yeah, I would support that. Victor?
Yeah, me too. I think that's safe, better.
Okay.
Please do that research that I asked you. Thank you. All right, let's get to the stuff that has to get. Sally sent me. Okay, one S is on for tonight. Funding request to dog park. It's time sensitive. We, we're going to, not time sensitive, we're gonna. What's on? Okay. One S. Funding sensitive for June twenty-seventh, uh, on for regular meeting, funding for dog park. Uh, has everybody seen this?
Yes.
Where are we now?
Page one.
One S.
One S.
One S, S, okay. We're getting done the stuff that has to get done.
Okay, so I just have to say, I don't think we're ready for this. I am, you know, even though I'm the person who's working with the ad hoc dog park committee. And the, um, and I called Dan today, but we didn't connect. Um, I don't think we've completed the secret documents. Like, it says it's four point two five acres, which isn't correct. It hasn't, we haven't typed it. And.
That's right here.
Right, but it hasn't, I don't think it's been properly typed. And, um, I also think that. We haven't done an alternatives analysis of why this location got picked. So I don't think we've done the secret. This is, this is, you know, this is. Initially, when, when this was recommended, the ad hoc dog park committee recommended it to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They looked at a series of sites, and, um, the thought was that this would be funded using their recreation fund. But we've expended those funds for the playground. So, um. We were going to do a, an alternatives analysis that didn't get done. And it's not a complicated alternatives analysis. But I, I mean, I feel like we're really rushing this. And the board hasn't had a chance to talk about the three different locations.
People have been waiting for years.
Okay, so what, what, so.
Billy's been here forever, there's no dog.
Okay, so, so Lou, since you're com- comfortable with this, can you explain the alternatives analysis and how this site was picked over others?
No.
Okay.
I want, I, I, I wanna, but this is for funding. Let's fund it and, and, and get, and get the paperwork done.
So, that's not how seeker works. We, we need to type it, and we need to do the EAF. This, it's, we haven't done it.
Whoever's been doing it should, uh, should.
What's the EAF in Congress?
It's, it doesn't, it doesn't explain an alternatives analysis. So what, what, what we, what was gonna be done in November did not end up getting done.
Why would there have to be an alternative analysis?
Because it's part of what.
We're, we're using our own parkland.
Okay, fine.
People have been waiting for this and waiting for this, and, you know, they're, they're clamoring for it. And it, it's just another way of not doing something. It, it, this is, this is, this is a use of a parkland. It's, it's in essence putting new park equipment.
Tom, look at the, look at the number of people in this room. There, there are this, what is, what type action is it?
What, what, what do you mean? What, what are you talking about?
I'm saying that we're, we are basically making a decision about how to use parkland on the basis of.
Message now, is the dog park coming up? The dog park.
Good, I hope people come to. I hope people come and talk. The, the. Tom.
They would like us to do a job.
Yes, okay, and I, and I know. Okay, and so we don't need to do seeker.
We've done seeker. You're saying seeker is not.
We haven't done seeker. Show me what type, what kind of action is it? What's the action? Is it a type one, type two, unlisted? I mean, we haven't done seeker. If it's a type two action, it doesn't have to go to HCZM. If it's not a type two action, it has to go to HCZM. I'm frustrated because we asked the planner to do seeker. Jerry said two weeks ago, we weren't ready for it. We didn't have the, the information. We don't have any more information than we had two weeks ago. And listen, I, I am, I have been working on this project and pushing for this project for a long time. It got postponed because Jerry was really too busy to do it during IDA. And everybody cut slack for that. But during that point, you know, subsequent to November, we were supposed to get. The environmental ducks in, in a row, and we didn't do it. And I'm, I'm, I'm frustrated that that didn't happen. And I think the dog park committee heads, has, you know, has, has, really wants to be involved in the actual execution of it. Um, and we don't have much of a plan for what's gonna happen. We have a very out of date. Engineering study that Jerry didn't actually wanna fund because he thought it was too, it was too expensive. So. He wasn't happy with that engineering study, but now that's before us.
Dan, can you speak to the seeker? It's just construction of surface facilities.
And we don't have a resolution saying it's type two. I mean, we, I mean, uh, listen, I would like this to, you know, it would be. I would like to get this done, but we have to have the, we have to do seeker properly. Yeah, let, here's Victor.
What? I just suggest we finish this properly and do it in two weeks.
I mean, I'll be happy to work on the secret forms with the planner. I'll be happy to get the paperwork in order. But I think we have to type it properly. We're fine.
Can't we move it to the regular gender in two weeks and then just get it done then?
It's on for tonight for funding. I mean, I, I mean, we could get, I think we could get.
Why don't we vote on the funding?
Because you, because the whole point about seeker is you don't undertake or fund an action until you've actually done seeker. I mean, I, I don't know about you. I think.
Or what?
Or what? It's not a type two action.
Or what? No, what's?
Or some, or someone can challenge it. And I, and you know, I mean, you're, you are the liaison to the committee for the environment. Seeker is New York State's environmental law. It's, we expect applicants to, to follow seeker. We put them through hoops to comply with seeker. I think we need to comply with seeker, and we haven't done our due diligence. My recommendation is we complete the documentation and we have it on for, um, because, you know, it's on, it, again. What, what's this procedure? It's on for tonight and for next week. It's on for both today and next week.
It's gonna be a dog park. This is our first dog park, probably in a series of dog parks, our first dog park. And, um, why don't we just prove the funds and, and, and take care of the, uh?
Because the, because approval of an action. I mean, seeker is a complicated topic, and, like, we, we don't need to seeker what, you know what? A seeker is required by New York State law, so maybe that's, and it's, and I agree, it's, it's, it's a bureaucratic hurdle. But we don't have, we haven't typed it. We haven't done an alternatives analysis. We haven't, and we ha- we don't have a resolution typing it. So my recommendation is, we have it on for the next work session.
Have to be an alternatives analysis.
Because that's what you do when you're, when you're typing an action. We looked at five parts. Okay.
Yes, this is a D I S.
But how did we get to this part? Why, I mean, I think we have. We, yes, and the rest. Look, there isn't even a memo explaining. There's documentation that Dan and I have prepared that isn't here in the backup. Can I please finish? I'm making a recommendation. We have certain requirements in order to. That we have to comply with in order to fund or permit an action under New York State law. That's a pretty basic bar. We haven't met that bar. What, and, and our, also, our policy is not to have something on a work session. Tell me, can I please? I'm, I feel like I'm a tour guide. I'm gonna wind back to A again. So, we, our policy is, which we, we just did with these referendums, is to discuss something on work session. And put it on for two weeks. My recommendation is, we put this on to fund in two weeks, to approve in two weeks. But for the regular session, and we get the secret documents in order for July eleventh. And I, Dan and I will make sure that they're done, what they're done, because they just, it just, it's because they just got slipped up.
You don't have to have alternatives if you're not doing a D I S.
I, I'll second that. I'll second Nora's proposal. I think will get us moving.
Yeah, it was on the last work session.
But as on the last work session, and we didn't discuss it because Jerry said we didn't have all the information. We weren't ready to discuss it. And we don't have any more information than we had last time. You know what? It's, you, you can call it dysfunctional.
I, I can observe and describe it as dysfunctional.
But I think that, I, I think that, I, I, I think it's, I think it's really important as an elected official. To comply with state environmental law. Call me a nerd, call me annoying. I think that that's really important. And we are. Not complying with state environmental law. And if we wait to, why not wait two weeks to get it right? I mean, I think that's really.
People have waited forever for it.
You know, the reason people have waited forever for it is because Jerry and staff were too busy to deal with it after IDA. So. It's clearly, there's, they were still too busy. It's not completed. I will work with them. I will, we'll get it done. And we'll, and we'll have it on the agenda for two weeks. I don't, I, I mean. Frankly, the fencing's not gonna be in for months, so the two weeks isn't gonna be any kind of a practical delay. They can even find the fencing. They can even find the fencing, John, Tom. It's, it's, right? I mean, it's hard to find the fencing.
Can I just clarify what you have to do on your seeker to comply with seeker?
Yeah.
You have to comply with seeker before you vote to fund the project. Follow seeker on the basis of the environmental assessment form. A quick look tells me this is not a type one action. Yes, environmental impact statement would be presumed to be required. It's not a type two action where the environment, where no environmental review is required. Which means it's a listed action. Yeah, you have whoever other information you have. You have to decide whether to adopt a negative declaration or a positive. Negative declarations of finding by the board that there will be no significant environmental impact as we like this project.
All right.
A positive declaration is a finding by the board that there may be a significant environmental impact. Results of this project. If you adopt a negative declaration, you can take the action. If you adopt a positive declaration, you have to go through the environmental impact statement process.
Consistency determination, correct?
So, so, so.
And so we should, if we ever refer this to the.
No, it hasn't gone to HCZM.
I mean, we have to lead by.
Because it's not a type two action.
Your, your attorney's just told you it's an unlisted action.
And, and so, and so from my perspective, having spent a lot of time on this. When we go through the four other sites, it's gonna be easy to make the case that this is the best, so this is the best.
Why are we going through the four?
Just, just explain, because, you know what, Tom?
I, I'm asking you a question you haven't explained.
To explain to the public what we did. I mean, I think that, that's open and transparent.
For it was a requirement, and it's not a.
Well, it, we, we have to adopt, in order to fund this, we, we have to either find it's. A type two action, which I don't see how we can make it a type two action. So we, it doesn't come meet. So we have to adopt an egg deck. The more information we have for an egg deck, the better off we are. And it has to go to HCZM. So I, I don't know why it was, I think maybe that's why Jerry said it wasn't ready two weeks ago. But, I, you know, I wanna do this probably more than anybody else on the board. But I also wanna do it correctly.
Fighting for this for ages.
I have, and I.
And, you know, but you're correct. We have to lead by example. We have to follow the law and adopt the I C across the T. Another two weeks, one way or another, is not going to make a major difference.
But question, Bob, have we made this more, more complicated than it needs to be?
Not yet.
Meaning?
Meaning, you, you have to do what you have to do to comply with seeker.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't need to do alternatives analysis for seeker purposes unless you find, adopt a pos deck. My guess is, you're not gonna adopt a pos deck. The one thing that, uh. Jumps out at me from this very quick look I took at the EAF, is it a critical environmental area? So, you know, I.
It's basically a bit of offense.
Well, but it's, it's also designating an area for dogs that may or may not create environmental problems. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an environmental. You know, engineer or planner or that sort of thing. But, but there is a process. And, and the village process is complicated, right? Especially with HCZMC.
I think to expedite the process, we could, um, refer it to HCZMC pending a revised EAF that has the actual. Acreage correctly noted. I mean, it's not the entire park. This EAF, this is the entire park. I don't think so. It's a little tight for them, but.
They just, you have to produce the whole form that they require, no? And it shouldn't, it shouldn't take.
So two more weeks, sir.
No, I think we refer it to H C Z M tonight, right? Can we do that?
Let's just do the back admission.
I don't think, we don't need to vote to refer to H C Z M.
Yes, you do. You don't act over them by voting.
You what?
You don't act over them by voting.
But do we have to refer to H C Z M or can the village manager just refer to H C Z M? I mean, if it were a bill, I mean, if, if we had.
If it was a land use thing, who would be doing it?
Or just the.
So what you're saying is we have to refer, correct? So I moved to refer to the, why don't we just do that when it comes up on the agenda tonight at the meeting? So having this, the cock that votes work session.
Work sessions, a meeting too.
Yeah, I know that. It's not how we've been working.
So we're gonna, we're gonna vote to refer.
Okay, uh, two A should not be on for, for July because we haven't discussed that yet. It's just, that doesn't have to be done tonight. Uh, to be, is Emmeline Dieter request to serve alcohol and at the concert in the park. But if any questions, concerns? Are you okay with this?
It's gonna be on tonight. We can explain it then. It's just basically.
They're, 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 they want to sell, uh, light, uh, refreshments, you know, a little beer and wine.
At the two.
One's to give a vision to serve the alcohol then there's, they want to sell. Apply for the special.
Right.
There's two.
Two events. It's the, a July and an August concert. That's, that are being done in conjunction with the arts council.
Fine with that. No problems. Two C. Change order for paving and harbor on park. Dan, sign off. You want to explain this?
Yeah. Can imagine the cost of asphalt. He's going up. The contract that will pretty black allows for some difference for that. So there is a change order request to increase the contract from four ninety-two, four ninety thousand, which is five, six cents to six hundred nine thousand, two hundred twenty-five cents. The asphalt.
How, how much of it is the curb?
When they, when they mill the old roads. Did they melt that down?
It gets, it gets recycled.
Gets recycled?
They did a great job on Atlantic Avenue.
Yeah.
Spectacular.
Some of the things the character for safety.
Could you speak up, Dan, please?
I said the, some of the pedestrian safety accommodations with the, the new crosswalks.
Okay.
It's on for tonight.
Is everybody okay?
Yep.
Uh, two D. There's another change order for Hillside Bridge. Dan, you want to talk about this?
Sure. It's, it, we, we only do the first one tonight. We have to, I spoke with the contractor this morning to revise on the second item, but the church wall, the board previously approved some additional funding in order to make this done almost efficiently. We already changed order to the original contract, few change order number three. The first two items, first two change orders have no change in the amount of the contract. They're just opening their time extensions. So this is just the, the change order specifically for the additional work we need to do to repair the wall, which is ninety percent reversible by five.
This is the same amount that we talked about the last two work sessions.
Uh, it's actually a little bit less. I think it was two hundred eighty-six was the engineer's estimate. This is coming in, I believe at two sixty-three.
Okay, so it's, it's the same thing.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Dan.
Welcome.
Okay, Hurricane Ida, is, is this going to be on for tonight as being hope?
It's being held. We're still working on obtaining some quotes. Uh, project starts.
Just remind us what it is, projects?
Uh, th, these are items that we're looking to purchase and more improvements to facilities to enhance the villages and municipal response to the business. So things like certain types of equipment, waiters to actually get in when they need to do stuff. And then upgrades facilities to make sure that they're, they can remain operational during.
They're more resilient.
The regatta, they have no backup generator, so it can be a bit challenging.
None of this is reversible.
No, I mean, no, it's not.
Do we have a, uh, do we have a portable backup generator?
We, we are able to, that's one of the things that we're looking at for the regatta possibly is to be able to have a portable generator on standby that we can bring to the regatta when we need it and just at the very least hook up our I T infrastructure. You know, one of the issues that we have is the power outage. Our, the, our main financial system is located at the regatta and there's no power. Say no T K maturity. So you were not able to enter purchase orders, process vouchers, things like that, just some basic stuff. Defer to my information technology expert, Mr. Frasco.
Okay, would you like to opine on that?
Yeah, that, the backup generator would be a, a third source of energy. The idea is to basically outfit the buildings with Tesla batteries. So we could get at least a week's worth of energy prior to recharging. So they would always constantly, the facility would constantly run on batteries and recharge off regular electricity. If power should go out, there's no, you don't feel anything. It goes right on batteries and you'll have thirty-six hours of battery power. That'll give us enough time to kick in a generator and recharge those batteries again.
Didn't we borrow a generator from the county?
Westchester County. But the generator plug is not set up out in front of the building. Want to make things more efficient, set up the batteries to be recharged.
Right.
Have a plug right outside the building, put it in place and start everything else. We're currently doing pricing for that. That's right. We're very fortunate. The panel in the regatta is right up against that wall. So it allows us to connect right into it.
Hopefully if we do that, we won't need it.
Fortunately, the storms are getting worse.
Absolutely.
Thank you, staff. Hurricane Isaiah, Westchester Joe Water Works Hostel customers need a vault on for July eleventh. That's what's talked about it tonight. It's the capital project. Uh, so by the chance a little bit back up from my friend, Mr. Birdsall.
Yep.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Uh, I guess we'll be on for regular meeting.
No.
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Yeah. Uh, another one, uh, purchase booster station and related P R V modifications. I've been assured that this is the last built for a purchase booster station. Once again, uh, everybody had a chance to look at it?
You're talking about H?
Two H, yeah.
H, yeah. Yeah. Okay, hearing no objections. You know, for regular meeting. Hold on a second.
Lizwick.
So we're all good for the Westchester Joe Waterworks stuff, okay? Okay, I, reforming, uh. Bob, you, did you, did you have a chance to look over this?
Mayor, I have a couple of concerns about it. I looked at it only briefly. But one concern. One concern is that it appears to authorize this body to spend money, purchase real estate, et cetera, uh, without any, any source of funding. Other than the, to call on the municipalities to fund it. Uh, the other is that, and I haven't researched this, but my concern is that the way it's structured, there are two votes from each municipality. And this is how the, the city of New Rochelle and Village Pallow, for example, which have rather disparate populations.
Seventy thousand and six thousand.
Right. So if it's, if it's apparently an advisory body, that wouldn't be an issue. If it actually exercises some governmental authority, there may be a concern about a one man, one vote situation. The bylaws that we give are twenty years old, more than twenty years old. And I, I would be concerned about advising you to do this, even if you want to do this without some new law at these bylaws and the structure.
So do you want to look at it more deeply and give us a recommendation of what, what you see specifically to problem?
So, you know, as far as the, uh, the I M A, uh, the city of New Rochelle, uh, they're gonna look at working up a new intermunicipal agreement up. So I think, uh, the city manager is gonna work with his. You look at the entire Lizwick. You know, as far as the, the statutory authority, it was never a, it was never a organization that had any, uh, it was not created by state law. It was a I M A among the municipalities to work together to engage in things, mostly educational background, except uh, looked at the, a study to form a regional stormwater management district. Unfortunately, it spent a lot of time on that, actually. It wasn't able to get any traction for the state. Yeah, they did, a lot of, uh, international grants that we worked on in the past. Yeah, I think it was the town of America got some grants for educational material produced, which I think we still have copies of. The, uh, did, you know, storm drain markings. It was really worth working together to try and develop uh, programs that we can all implement at a, at our local levels to educate the public about stormwater and not pollution.
And if that's the purpose, there, there's no real issue with that. That's, that's fine. The, my concern was that some of the powers, in my quick read of this, it looked like it had powers that went beyond that.
We should have a draft I M A at some point. We're this month or early next month.
Dan, could, could you convey those concerns, uh, to Lizwick?
Absolutely. Yeah, that, I think I helped prepare the last update to the bylaws.
Of course, I'm very much in favor of our joining Lizwick. I think concerns of the race are valid. You say that, but I think what we should also communicate with other people on the board object is that we need to work holistically on watershed management and this is the vehicle for it.
So. Dan, I'm, I'm blanking on the name. My, my predecessor in the town of America looked very hard.
Phyllis.
Phyllis.
She was the.
Phyllis Whit.
The chair.
Yes.
She was a force of nature. If anyone ever met Phyllis, that was the best way to describe.
Yes, she was.
I worked for her when I was in high school. She was a good boss.
I would not run across Phyllis.
That's a point well taken. Participation was just a power contract uh, for communities in the Connet Service area. Don't we already anticipate this?
Yeah, but there have been, you know, several ongoing changes, you know, the, uh, the last agreement that the board approved was for an extension in the current arrangement and attempt to try and cap the cost for the purchase of energy. I think it's thirteen point nine cents per kilowatt hour, something like that. Uh, Westchester Power has been fiercely researching the market and I, I don't think I need to explain what's happening. The external pressures that are occurring, not only in the energy sector, but just in general. And I think they're having a, a hard time getting to that price level. Uh, my quick review of the draft is that it's gonna remove that cap because it's just, it's not realistic right now. Trying to gap the cost of energy, but it's just not giving any traction or quotes that have come first to that.
Everybody fine with up in on? And thank you for that. Remind ourselves that we do have an executive session.
So what time do we want to start that?
We'll, we'll go to fifteen.
Back to D.
Back to the social media policy.
You know, I think we should just put that off because it's going to be a long conversation and we're not, we're, we have to draft a policy. But the next thing that should happen is people should take stabs at drafting policy and come back with some draft policies. If that's okay with everybody. Well, not off, but just like for tonight. Let's just like, let's see if we can come back with some policies.
Okay, playing with comments on tree law.
Do we know?
We're, we're going back to the top of.
So I hate to say this, but I caught part of the planning board meeting on Wednesday and they had some other comments and a conflict with the tree law. So, and it had to do with the phrase, they where we have two years, like if the tree that's planted doesn't survive with two years and has to be replanted and they want to put in perpetuity in their tree preservation plan, maybe it would be better to have that conversation them before we, well, before we, well, you know, like, I, I may not be correct with in perpetuity, but that's, that's like, but like if they do a tree preservation plan, they want to make sure that it lasts for longer than two years. And our tree law has a two-year timeframe, or if you plant something, then and it dies and you have to replenish it. So I, either we can, we, either we can go with these changes and I just don't want to get to version twenty-one again. I mean, they're just Bob.
Isn't there a hard stop of like version twenty?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Eighteen.
They, they could, there's nothing that says they couldn't put a requirement in their tree preservation plan that's different than what the tree law is.
Law tree law requires of everyone.
Okay. Well, maybe that's what they did. I don't know. But having said that, so we go through it and see if. Okay.
Just start, I just got a quick break, but go ahead, please.
Do you? Do you want to do or you want me to do it? I'll start and you, you can tell me when I'm wrong. Okay, so, um, basically the planning board found a couple of discrepancies with what they do. So the first one is in section three, one, eight dash eight, removal of trees on private property. And they asked that we strike um, the protected tree interferes with the permitted use of the property and/or is specifically identified for removal in an approved wetland permit, special use permit subdivision plot, site plan or landscape plan. They, the recommendation was that that did not need to be in the language because it would be in those plans provided by the planning board. Does that? I'm not sure why we're striking that.
I think that's a more substantive change than the model suggests.
Okay.
Because what, what you're doing is saying your, your plans for development of property can't go forward. Your plans for the property needing to be developed. Want to put it on the bench on the property. Protect the tree, but maybe that's what you want to say. Uh, that's a significant change in the law.
I don't, that, so I don't know why that recommendation was made. I'm not sure what they were getting at, and I don't see how we could do that. And in three eighteen dash seven, maintenance trees in private property, there were some recommendations that are in bold and green, and the tree committee came up with a different, different language, and it, this has to do with if, if a tree falls.
Nobody hears it.
And nobody hears it. But if a tree falls, you should be able to remove the tree. But they wanted to have some sort of confirmation that when a tree falls, you have to get a permit to remove a tree, you can do it on an emergency basis, but you have to show that, the pictures that it actually fell, so you can't just knock down a tree, claim it fell, and get, you know, permit retroactively. So they decided to change it to the, they recommended that it get moved to the emergency removals provision. And so they added, so that, so the language, existing language is removal of any tree is permitted by any person when? And they added, a tree has fallen down or has been uprooted as a result of natural causes. And the immediate, and they added and, the immediate removal of the tree is necessary. Then, what, they've added to the sentence, with three business days, they've added of such, for removal, documented evidence, and said, they eliminated such as, and they said document, documented evidence, including photographs. Along with a tree removal, completed tree removal application must be submitted to the village manager or manager's designated. So the point here is, we have a tree that falls down, you should be able to remove it on an emergency basis, but um, you would treat it the same way a precarious tree would be, you could remove it, but you have to document it and get a permit for it within three days. With fixtures, yeah.
And if you fail to submit a photograph, it's a violation.
Right, it's a violation, so if you, if you, so they don't want, I mean, they don't want to prohibit people from removing a dangerous tree or tree that's fallen. But they're, they want people to follow the process, so that there aren't too many dangerous trees or too many trees that have fallen. Does that seem, that language seem okay with you? I mean?
Could be ambiguous, ambiguous.
Well, you require.
A year from now, two years from now, three years from now, there are all sorts of complaints about this process. There's no way to avoid them, you know what, some people say the tree got taken, shouldn't have been taken away. Other people shouldn't, other people saying the tree had to be taken away. And, you know, unless you want to hire a force of tree police, it's gonna be, there always gonna be these kinds of ambiguous situations, usually nobody's watching every square inch of the village.
So should we wait until we see what, what the main problems are based upon practicality?
Well, I think that, um, this hat, there was an instance in which this happened, and Jerry wanted to have people get a permit. And then he wasn't sure whether it was able to require the permit, so I think, I think the point is, if a tree falls down, um, of course you can remove the tree. But he can tell by a photograph whether it fell down from natural causes, he or a designated can tell whether it was removed by natural causes, or whether it was caused to be caused to be felled. So I think this, I mean, this, the, Jerry felt this would make it easier for him to administer the emergency removals provision. He's the one that's gonna have more headaches than anybody else about this.
Axwart or a good giveaway, is that?
I think that's right, yeah, yeah.
I also think we should put a time limit for the, for the permission. I also think there should be a time limit for the village to act.
Well, there is, elsewhere in the code, there's a timeframe for when you apply for a permit, they have to do it within, I think it's fifteen days, I'm not sure. I, I don't, the whole code isn't here.
This is not a permitting party. This is a, you took down the tree, you submit the photo, you have to do that within three days.
Yes, but you all, but you're, but you're applying for a, a permit to remove the tree. So with that, you're applying for a permit to remove the tree.
Expost factum?
Not exactly how it reads.
Well, there's a tree, it says a tree removal permit.
But, but this is a, this section K is an exception to the permit required. And section A says, no person may remove a tree without, without, right? Section K says, defines an emergency situations in which, uh, the tree may be removed without a permit. It doesn't contemplate getting a tree permit approved. Because that would be foolish, or maybe nonsensical, because the tree's already down.
But you have to.
But what it contemplates is, it's, it does, does say have to submit the application, but doesn't define what happens, this doesn't say why, why the application should be considered, or what happens when, when it's denied. The way I would read this is, there's two ways you get a violation out of this. One is you don't submit the photo within three days. Number two, if the photo shows that the axwarts, you violated the tree law, it doesn't fall within the emergency, and you didn't get a permit. No, but I don't think it contemplates an approval process.
Are, are these trees registered individually?
No.
How do you know if an individual tree is cut down on somebody's property? How would you possibly know that?
Presumably somebody complains.
You take, it's like anything else, you know, it's like, you take a risk, you know, you could, people, people do electrical work they shouldn't be doing without a permit, or plumbing work that shouldn't be doing without a permit, they take a risk.
If I still own trees.
Well.
But the whole idea is, is to preserve the.
Karen enabler, but it's all right.
So you're saying somebody could take down a tree, file for the permit, an emergency file for a tree removal permit, and the village doesn't have to issue it within the timeframe, they have to issue the other tree removal permits?
The way I read this, I read this a little bit different. I read this as you're not applying for a tree permit, you are submitting the application. Presumably because you want the information that's on the application. But you're not getting a post hoc permit. You're getting, you're either going to, with the picture and the permit, application. You're really gonna establish that there was an emergency basis for removing the tree, or you're not. And if the village manager determines that you didn't establish the basis, the emergency basis for removing the tree, then you have violated the tree law.
But either way, they, there should be a timeframe on it.
So a tree you didn't know was there falls down, and you have to go report it to the village that you were moving it?
Well, if you wanted to remove it, if you wanted to remove it, you'd have to get a permit to remove the tree. You have to get a, you, in this village, you have to get a, a permit to remove a tree on private property.
Let's go to executive session. The Board of Ethics Referrals.
I mean, what do we? I'm happy to do it, but are we gonna talk about this in two weeks again, or?
Yeah, as I.
This is, Jerry has to be on.
In two weeks again, so if, if there's anything we can do to clarify in two weeks, we can.
What do we, what, yeah, what do we want to do?
I don't think it makes sense to say, your tree fell down, you can take it away, but then you have to come in and apply for a permit. And if the permit's denied, what happens?
We've already said that, uh, we've said that a few, we've said that if, we have said that. We've just, I mean, that's, that, what, what I just read, we added a few simple words to it for a tree.
We have said that, right, respectfully, while we haven't, it doesn't say that. It says you have to submit the application. It doesn't address whether the application is granted, has to be granted or denied. And in my mind, it's, boom, the tree's down and gone. Presumably because there's a process by which the village managers go to determine whether the removal was justified uh, in accordance with the emergency, that, that's, I assume, why this is in here.
Well, yeah, that is why it's.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I think, I think we were trying to catch, we, we were trying to catch, you know, uh, things that we can't catch. You know what I mean, as I hear this being explained, and, and I'm thinking about it, you know, we, we're trying to make sure that, you know, every, every fallen tree was legit fallen tree, and it, it gets to a point where we're just, you know, being pre-placed.
Well, we do have a provision that if the tree falls, you have to, after the fact, apply for a permit. And they were just, they were just, Jerry, Jerry and Jerry, Jerry and the tree committee decided it needed to be explained a little bit better. So if Jerry wants to wait for two weeks, we can wait for two weeks, but I want to.
My question is, do we need that? It's in the code, so they're reacting to the code. My question is, is that a practical application of the code? And is it gonna be on more to breach than, than in the?
All right, so let's have that conversation.
Okay.
Two weeks.
That's intense, or this doesn't say.
I, I really was, it's just B C C.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this, I know.
I know, but we started, talked about, about, uh, changing these.
I got four things I can.
But this, this, this relates to something that happened, that everybody was screaming bloody murder about two weeks ago, and, and, uh, doesn't want to do it, we don't want to do anything about. Want to talk about, uh, trees that we don't know about that fell down. I don't know, I want to put her off, put her off.
New motion.
We're not gonna do the Board of Ethics Referrals, because Jerry's not here, and I don't know what that's about. Incentive program, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one F of the New York State Public Office as well, as related to, yeah, okay, it's about the incentive program. And I'd also like to talk in executive session, uh, about the contract between the P V A and the Village of America.
Mayor, and I would also like to offer a suggestion about the, um, the review of the village manager.
Review of the village manager?
You, you, you're, you're the failure to come up with a consensus, I have an idea that I'd like to flip by my colleagues.
I don't think we can be discussing the village manager review with that, though, the lawyer, I know we didn't notice that, and I don't think that's.
All right.
I don't think it's sliding, I think we have to go into.
It's, it's a structural thing, it's not an actual, uh, let's go to that.
No, no, I would suggest you, you, you send that to the lawyer and the board. I need a motion.
To go into executive session?
What I just delineated.
One oh five one F.
And also the contract.
Also.
Second.
Chrissy is young.
Yes.
Snatchers, Lucas?
Yes.
He's gone.
And I, I'm also, I would like to make a motion to go to executive session, discuss an appointment to H C Z M, because we've been delaying that, and they're a little bit short. We didn't, I mean, we were gonna do it two weeks ago, and we didn't do it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, well.
Okay, I, I, it's just, I.
I know, I don't have it in front, I don't know.
And I, I, I ask comments on it, too, I'm not comfortable putting people on boards without talking to them, meeting, I don't, I don't think it's the way to do it.
So let's hold that off for two weeks. Call roll. It's, yeah, yeah. Hey, what's his name? L M C, what's your name again? I'm sorry, Anthony. Could you put us on executive session and take a powder?
We need to get a better waiting room for them.
Yes, yes, we would, yes, we would, that would be lovely. Something that doesn't belong in that.
Maybe he's in executive session, I don't know.
He might have gone into executive session, it's true.
He moves in mysterious ways. Were you on executive session? Give me one more second.
Fascinating work session you all just had. And as far as I know, you do have to follow the secret laws. Thank you, Bob. Did I hear correctly, the mayor may sue the village to retain power if you can get the village to pay for it? Really interesting stuff. Anyway, I am here to talk about what the mayor refers to as my Crixotic lawsuit. Indeed, there's no opportunity that goes by without the mayor making derogatory and untrue comments. So I want to set the record straight. First, the bulk of the bills the village paid on my behalf to defend against charges from the Board of Ethics who paid three years ago. So why does the Board of Trustees, the meeting backup, continue to include a newspaper article and a list of paid bills, meeting after meeting after meeting? And since it was the mayor who contacted the reporter to discuss ongoing legal matters in public, I can only imagine it was to try to damage my reputation, both personally and professionally. Second, contrary to what the mayor claims, I did not lose my case challenging the Board of Ethics' opinion on the merits. All that happened was that the case was sent to the political division. If there's any confusion on this issue, I am certain the village attorney can explain it to you. Finally, any legal fees the village has incurred for their attorney since 2020 have been completely within the board's control. There were multiple opportunities for the mayor to lead this board and settle the lawsuit at no cost to the taxpayers. All of those legal fees could have been avoided. Let me say it again, the cases could have been settled at absolutely no cost to the taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Hillary Short, resident of the village. I don't think I have to say, I live on Pedemore Road. I'm here because I did also listen to the earlier meeting and it's a very heated time because we have our primary election tomorrow. And I do know after tomorrow, we will have a change in Democrats in the village. Hopefully, we will have better representation on our side of the village, as we don't have that now. And I just want to say that I'm here to speak about the dog park. This has been ongoing for many, many years. And when I was canvassing for our slate, we're running to be trustees in the village. That was the number one issue in my community. Many, many residents want a dog park. I don't know why there's a dog committee that has to decide where we have a dog park. We need to have a dog park. The secret thing apparently is not too complicated to get going and do. And the village manager did tell me they found the fencing. And so there was a fencing issue, but they found the fencing. And I do like the idea that that it would be fenced and that there would be a key fob and that it would be limited and we would pay for it. And I hope that it's still on the agenda tonight to have it financed for, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. This is Catherine Hiller. I live in 528 Monroe Avenue. I have a dog. And I would like him to be able to play with other dogs. I would also like to be able to chat with other dog owners because a dog park is not really for the dogs, it's for the people. And so me and Maranick have so much, but here's one thing we really don't have, and the adjacent towns and villages do. So I think it's a site has been found for it in Harbor Island Park, right by the sewage plant. But that's fine, if they could fence it and have a place for dogs, that would be great. So I'm hoping that will happen and I'm a little confused, what is the status of it now? Thank you.
Thank you. It is on the agenda for tonight. I believe what we're going to do is we're going to refer it to the Hobble Coasters Zone Management Committee and then see what the next permutation is to finish. Apparently, the some members felt that the environmental assessment form wasn't completely filled out and they needed more information.
Some members and our attorney.
I hope so.
It's a matter of following the process, it's more than the form. So it's not that anybody has a dog park, it's a question of doing it correctly.
But is the form still, is it the view of the board?
I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if you had an opportunity to watch the work session. The in order, I think, I, I mean, I'm not speaking for anybody but myself, I've been working for a dog park for quite a while. There is a process by which, when the board is going to take an action, There is a process by which, when the board is gonna take an action, there has to be paperwork filled out, just like if you're applying for a building permit, you might have to, and you, there's an environmental review and it gets referred to the HCM. And in this instance, the staff was busy and it got to us without having gone through those other steps. It, there were steps that we're supposed to go through before it got to us, or we're gonna try and expedite those steps and hopefully the environmental review will be done and we can approve the dog park. But part of, part of what we are obligated to do under New York state law is when we take, undertake any action or fund an action, is we have to do the appropriate environmental review. And I'm sure you would not want the village to approve projects that didn't have the appropriate environmental review. You wouldn't want the planning board to do it or the zoning board to do it, we're like any other board in that regard.
But is there a timeline involved?
It, it should be, it, it, if, if you get, if you're gonna address, please go to the mic again. But just to answer your question quickly, it, we're, we're gonna look at it again in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dorothy Muzaffi, I'm here with my husband, we also live in the area on Clarkland Avenue. And we're also here to support the dog park, so I just wanted to, to state this, we think it's really important, here a couple of years ago. And we're very surprised that in this village, there is no opportunity for us to, to let our dogs play somewhere without disturbing the rest of the population. And I think it's been a bit of a debate in Maranick, you know, some people want the area to be clear of dogs and some people want their dogs to go somewhere. And so we just need to find an agreement, so it'd be great.
I have faith that we will.
Thank you.
Merci.
Hi, I'm Joseph Muzaffi. Um, my wife actually spoke about, about that, the fact that we have a dog. And I find it very, very difficult, because every time that we walk in there, we feel like we're breaking the law. Uh, if we pass, you know, in a certain part of the park, uh, by holding our dog, you know, after eight AM in, in the morning, and I don't think this is right, you know, in any other place. This is standard, you know, everybody has, you know, every village has an area for exercise in the, the pets. And what I wanted to, so what I understand, I mean, I, it's the first time I attend this meeting, so I, I assume that everyone is in support of such an initiative. It's just thinking whether, what is the best solution, the best place to put this park, right? Is that, is that how it is or something?
No, I, I, there, there's, there's, uh, agreement on this.
Yeah.
Placement, it's just, as, as trustee Luke has pointed out, procedure.
Okay, because it's, you know, they, they, they miss an idea and after you go into details and of course everything has to meet, you know, already based on code.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, come back.
You Jimmy Abadi, one seven Washington Street, I'm not here for the dog park, but I think it's a great idea. I wanted to ask about the Army Corps of Engineers, I don't know if you can answer it or guide us in the right direction. I know that we had the meeting and they said, you know, we're looking at two or three years before they really start anything. Is there any way that we can try to, excuse me, as a village, get to speed it up somehow? I know, you know, it was a hundred year flood that happened way before it should have happened. And now everybody is scared, you know, it's like to have to wait another two or three years for them to start this project, it's kind of insane. So, you know, I don't know who the address is to, I'm just addressing to the board, if there's anything that we can do or the board can do, or who do we have to go to to try to get this pushed up a little bit? Or if anybody has done that.
I, you know, uh, and it, it's a valid concern. And, you know, I think that's one that we could, you know, ask them to do, but, you know, they have their, you know, in, in, in their mind, and I know not in your mind or my mind, we live in their mind, they all move them quickly. But, uh, I, I hear what you're saying, Jimmy. We, we, we could, we could see if we could, Dan has his hand up?
Well, you know, one of the items that the Army Corps of Engineers, their project is the bridge. You have, just from personal experience with, it's worth, you know, we've been designed, we, we were designed for four years at Hillside to get to the point where it's actually deconstruction. The town of Maranick has been designed since one, December of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, I think they're finally getting close to the end, so hopefully that, only the project with the town of Maranick is taken care of. We'll be, you'll see that being done sooner rather than later. You, you will see some action in terms of the components of the one and four project. But, yeah, I, I, they, they have to be army for me, I, I sat down, thought of all of the agencies, levels of government and other partners that we need to coordinate with. But just for those that have the bridge, I could think of course to two dozen off the top of my head. I wish it could go faster, uh, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to minimize anyone's concern. Uh, but we want, we want each of these projects to get done, they get done right. Uh, you know, I think we'll do Hillside Avenue Bridge, you know, four years of construction, I said four years of design, it's been a pretty seamless construction so far.
Thank you.
And Jimmy, you, you should know that we're collecting, uh, suggested tweaks, uh, to, uh, to, to present to the Army Corps of Citizens, uh, from the people from the flood committee and, and Tony was, was here and, and people from the environmental committee gave us a very good proposal, uh, during the work session. And, uh, and, and we're, we're weeks away from having a, a city engineer, a village engineer. And we'll have, uh, that engineer and the village manager look at it and, uh, and, and, and present that to the Army Corps for evaluation. So that, and then in addition, there's our unilateral activity that, that we're, 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 sorry, so we're not standing still. Uh, and I understand the anxiety, believe, I share it too, I look at that river every time I drive by and, and my heart's in my throat.
You know, listen, I, you know, everything you guys have done, we appreciate it, it's just, uh, we just, if there's any way that we can put a little fire somehow, because it's, it's been years. And this is like the third flood since we've been dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, not the first one. And, you know, for them to say two or three more years, it's like.
Uh, but I think, I, I agree with you, but I also think the fun, you know, this, it's, the funding's pretty recent, you know, I mean, for, you know, even though it was approved, we didn't have the funding. And I think people who work for the Army Corps are as excited to get started on this project as we are to have them. So I, and I think, you know, I think they're, I think they're working as fast as they can, but as accurately as they can. So once, you know, once they start construction, it's gonna go, it's gonna be able to go quickly, because they can get the first thing, but, but I, but I, you know, I think that by nature, they're cautious because they're engineers and they have to make sure that what they design is well-designed and that the money is used wisely. But I also think from having talked to some of them and from having a couple of friends who work for the Corps, the Corps is pretty excited about this project, because they thought it was never gonna happen. And so, you know, in a, in a way, they're, they're really on our side, I mean, they are on our side, so.
But they are, what, they are in the design stage, the first one is the Ward Avenue Bridge, they are moving quickly on.
I, I understand your concern, we'll, we'll voice it too.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else in the room? Just while, while Glenn gets up, I just want to point, I was down in Rockaway Beach, uh, Saturday, and they have a huge Army Corps, uh, product that's almost done. Uh, they replaced the boardwalks, they built dunes on the beaches, now they're, they're installing rock jetties on areas that didn't have them before. And that, that has all happened from the big flood that they had in twelve thirteen and
He's danced.
And, uh, you know, I just want to put out, if you go down and you look at what they did, Rock, and, and I know Rockaway really well, went to Rockaway my whole life, Rockaway's so much better now. You know, they did a great job, they included dog parks, they included skate parks, it, it, they, so I was really impressed when I saw the Army Corps' work. So I'm just, I'm taking, I'm giving you a plug for their end product, turned out really good. Go ahead.
Glenn Tippett, five oh six Hill Street, live and in person. Good evening, board. Uh, we can actually start off with the flooding. Uh, one recommendation I have made to the board probably about ten times, and at this point, I would like a board member to put it, uh, a proposal for a work session in the future, raising the height limit on properties in the flood zone by up to fifteen feet. Any resident who has a property within the flood zone can raise their property up to fifteen feet and have a variance of fifteen feet to height regulations in order to move their property out of the zone. They, they can't change the, uh, square footage of, of the home, the footprint of a home, if they do that, they have to go to order of appeals. Half of, uh, the property underneath where they raise the house has to be pervious surface. And at any time, they decide either to lower the house or to enclose, they lose their height variance. Not very complicated, maybe five percent of the residents can afford to do it, or they could sell to somebody who could afford to do it. But it's a no, no, no-brainer for people to get out of the flood zone. Number two, somebody made this suggestion, something you can do outside of the Army Corps of Engineer. Can we go to the New York State Highway Authority and ask if they could possibly do an upgrade on water retention of the highway that cuts through the village of Maranick? The St. Vito side of the village in the last flood flooded before the river flooded. That area was flooded an hour before the river flooding, I know because I was out there. The police had it completely blocked off, the, that was flooded out somewhere around ten A, uh, ten PM. The river went over approximately eleven PM. So obviously, between groundwater and the water that's coming off the highway, that's a major problem for that side of, of the village right there. And it might be that New York State Highway, which has completely different standards of water retention now, might be able to do something to upgrade the water retention that they have for the highway that goes through the village. Uh, budget. Dog park, terrific idea. How does it get paid for? We have program after program, hundred sixty thousand emergency, um, equipment for services, hundred sixty thousand dollars, great idea, how do we pay for it? Dredging, one point six million, how do we pay for it?
One point three.
One point three, well, I'm no, but what was passed. But bottom line is, since the budget was adopted, you've passed almost two million dollars worth of spending between sewer, between, uh, water and between projects. With, 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 with no thought of how does it get paid for? Whether it's the reserve fund, whether it's raised taxes, whether there's a, uh, raise fees in the village, whether you're gonna bond it. You, you are simply outspending what we bring into the village and you have for years, your operating budget is fine. That comes in every year, yet we go further into debt every year, because our capital spending is outstripped of what we're paying off in our bonds. And you simply can't do that forever, you gotta decide to raise taxes, raise fees. There's programs in, in the village, we write ten parking tickets in the village and we lose money writing parking tickets, because we don't generate enough revenue to cover the costs of what it does writing parking tickets. It has to be looked at. Maybe we gotta do thirty-five dollars, forty dollars a parking ticket. We have a marina that the mooring boat fees and everything do not cover the cost of the maintenance and the capital of the marina. We lose money and forty-nine percent of the boaters aren't even from the village. We, you, you should be having a meeting about capital spending, you haven't yet. You should have, you, you have, you have an operating budget, you actually have a capital budget, but this board has not yet addressed it. You have to figure out what your needs are, not what your wants are. And you have to prioritize it, then you have an entire list of items that have to be, be addressed that, that are promised. We have the next phase of the sewer, the last phase, have we gotten that presentation yet? Have we gotten the, have we gotten the last, um, presentation for the last phase of the sewer, because we're under court order with that one?
Yeah, we know, we, we.
Do, do we know when we're getting that presentation?
I don't know, we're pending, and I'm sorry, Glove, your time's up, pal.
Okay, well, let me do a quick hunter, uh.
No, Glenn, 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 please, please Glenn follow the rules.
Firehouse and seawall repairs all have to be addressed.
Thanks. Uh, we have somebody online who wants to talk, uh, could you allow, do you have a popular Mr. Queiroz?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor and the whole board, the village of Maranick website still has no litigation documents for two thousand and twenty-two, and the year is actually half over on Thursday. For example, by the loss of McCrory, uh, Fettie, or, uh, four ten to four eighteen, Maranick Avenue posted.
If that's the case, we'll look into it, uh, I'm sure Ms. Roberts is hearing you and she will look at it.
And post it, I guess, pretty soon this week?
I, 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 if, if that's the case, I'm sure she will.
Okay, thank you.
I think it is. Those people's. Uh, anybody else in the room? Could you move Mr. Queiroz back, because he's still. Alright, thank you all. There were no public hearings tonight, first item on the agenda is the order of the bills.
Two A.
Is a budget transfer to cover AKRF engineering costs. Taken from contingent and from legal services into engineering. Guess we have money left in legal contract services. Uh, any questions, concerns? Okay.
This is for last year's.
This is, this is for last year.
For last year.
If, if you notice, when we go to the abstracts, there'll be two abstracts, there'll be one for, uh, last year, one for this year, because we are still playing last year's bills as they come in.
Last year, I mean, so May thirty.
Village is fiscal year from, from June first to May thirty-first, don't ask me why. Any questions or concerns about what's in front of us? No, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Or equal role?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Three to four is absent.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Uh, the next up is the abstract of ordered vouchers. Twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, this is last fiscal year. Six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight dollars and sixty cents. May have questions, concerns?
Is this the last one for last year, I'll get even?
Probably not.
Oh, maybe a few more will come in.
Really, well, you have another one that needs to come in?
We have one more. Depends on what bill's really coming, and try to give them thirty to sixty days after subsequent year on.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns about, uh, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Or equal role?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you. Uh, now this is, we're getting to this year's abstract. And that totals two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and one cent. Any questions or concerns?
Uh, on page sixteen. Second major thing from the bottom, I think there's a typo, I don't think it means no of bills. At least I'm hoping that's right.
Any questions or concerns that he says that? Need a motion?
Second.
Second, that's, or, or that's corrected.
Yeah, or equal role, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
And I I would say I think we need to schedule and maybe we can do it in August. We last summer, we worked on adopting having meetings and adopting a capital budget plan. And we never did it. And I think we need to do it because we have spent a lot of money and I want to be sure that we have enough, we're able to do the things we really need to do. And we have spent a lot of money in the last, in four weeks, we've approved. Since we adopted the budget on April twenty-fifth, we have made a lot of other commitments and I think it would be good for us to really adopt a capital budget. We've been working on it for two years and I think we need to adopt a capital budget.
Good thing.
And we can maybe set that up for August.
All right, uh, item four A, E V charging stations. Basically, the village is looking to add charging stations for electric vehicles instead of buying them. Instead of buying them and maintaining them, we we are going to contract out with someone who is going to install them in the village. And uh, we we have none of the headache. Uh, we get five percent of the revenue. And uh, if it breaks or if it uh malfunctions, it's on the provider, not on us.
Two questions, if I may. One is, do we have any? How is, how are, how the rate set? They just set whatever they want or do they need?
Usually it's it's a rate that the the user or the charger pays while they're charging.
No, I I understand, understand. You don't know the car, charging their vehicle has to pay a fee.
Right.
How is the fee set?
Uh, they said it, but I can, I can follow that.
Okay. And the second is, did we talk with any other companies? Is there any other competitive companies out there? It's just the only one?
Uh, I think Rain uh has a relationship with my server. The New York State Energy Research Development Agency. So that's how we really get in touch with them. So they have an existing relationship.
But does anybody else know what? I I mean, that the que- the question is this just a sole provider or is there?
There are other providers. Uh, I think would be favorite about Blake was the fact that we do have the event we shared. Um, the uh, the basically the responsibility for the.
I I'm not not suggesting it isn't attractive to the village. I'm just curious.
Is it, we we do have a a machine to another company. Uh, we've had, it works. We've had some issues with it. The support is.
This was discussed in in.
Yeah.
Well, I think that the Committee for the Environment discussed it. We discussed it briefly at our last work session.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I I heard uh, and I saw a lot of uh uh move internal movement uh discussing it. So this is not a surprise.
This was the recommendation from the Committee for the Environment.
That's right.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Augustino?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi.
Uh, resolution authorizing the serving of alcohol at the blessing of the fleet. That's an interesting sentence. Every July fourth, the Coast Guard Auxiliary has a, as a a little contest for the most wackiest decorated boat. And uh, one of the members of the clergy goes down and blesses the fleet as they go by. Uh, it's actually a very nice uh little little ceremony. And uh, I think, I think they have a couple of bottles of wine. It's not uh, it's not a heavy drinking thing. But uh, they they need permission. Anytime you sell or provide alcohol in Harbrow Park, you need the permission of the Board of Trustees via our code. So that's why this is on our agenda. Okay, so I will make the motion for the Coast Guard Auxiliary to serve alcohol at the blessing of the fleet.
Second.
Augustino?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay, it's like an alcohol night. Next, the next uh is approval to serve alcohol at the Tiki Invasion at Harbrow Park on July fifteenth. Tiki Invasion is a very nice party that they have on the beach. Uh, and it's a uh L M C T V and the Village of America Recreation Department do it together. And it is a fun night. Might be more than two bottles of wine, uh, shared at that night. But uh, it's always a fun time. There's music, there's games, there's a movie for the kids. It's just a great night out. Uh, and July fifteenth, I encourage everybody to come down and uh, meet your friends at L M C T V and uh, our our great employees of the Village of America Rectable. All righty.
Well, I'll make the motion and I, but then I have a question afterwards.
All right. I'll second the motion. What's your question?
It, the Emlyn request is supposed to be on for tonight, too.
Yeah.
It's coming up.
It's the final regularly scheduled.
Yes, it's coming.
Okay, it's on in my packet. Okay, fine. I don't have it. That's all. I don't have it. Okay.
Uh, okay, we have a motion, a second call.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi.
It's it's four J, yeah, four J.
Oh, you know what? I do have it.
Yeah.
I do have it. It doesn't say Emlyn. Okay, no, I do have it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Dog park update. Uh, what we're going to do here is we're going to make an emotion, make it a motion. We're gonna make a motion uh, to refer uh, the application uh that the villagers filled out for the construction of a dog park in Harbor Island Park to the H C Z M C. And I will make that motion.
Second.
Augustino?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi.
And I, I just would add that in order for us to approve this, which means approve, fund, undertake, we have to first have consistency and advisory consistency determination by the H C Z M. That's why we're doing it this way.
The ultimate decision is up to us. They can only advise.
They can advise us.
Authorization to install security cameras at various locations within the village. Uh, what this is, the village is going to purchase twenty-eight uh cameras. They are remote cameras. That means that they are operating off uh off off of uh wireless technology. And they will be placed in twenty-eight locations that a police department decides uh should be more advantageous. Uh, they will be, you know, uh screened and monitored behind the police desk that, you know, basically they'll be using. If there's an issue, they can then go and check to see what happened or what's going on. Uh, and I think that what we found over time is that police cameras uh both protect the police and they protect uh the citizens and they uh sometimes exonerate people who are accused of crimes where it turns out they're not accused of crimes. So I think, I think it's a great idea for justice overall. If if we have these throughout the uh community, uh, I don't think that anyone in this day and age has an expectation of privacy when they're on a public street. Uh, you know, if if you walk anywhere in the city or in a lot of communities, you're on camera. As I pointed out, that uh his phone has a much better video camera than the uh fourteen hundred dollar video camera I bought thirty years ago when my daughter was born. Uh, so everybody now has a, you know, a a quality uh video camera walking around. So it's it's ubiquitous and it'll help us keep the community safe. Typically, something say.
Yeah, what was the cost?
Total cost, hundred ninety-seven thousand.
And where's it coming out of?
Uh, I'm a capital budget account to be ter- determined by the clerk treasurer.
So it's cost to be funded through the future of future surplus or issues.
Thank you.
And what's gonna be the maintenance cost?
Dan, you know that?
I don't know the answer.
I don't think there'll be much maintenance cost, that is true, though.
And the last thing is um, well, it gets two. Number one, the placement. This can't be where all the cameras are placed in one segment of the village. We're just watching one small segment of the population.
We're cognizant of that.
The second one, it shouldn't be used for envo- for enforcement of violations. You shouldn't be looking at the cameras to go give out uh smoking tickets or in the port afterwards. That that's, you know.
Like I said in the beginning, like I said, like I said is, it'll be used after there's a complaint to view what the complaint was. I think anybody's, anybody's gonna be looking at it, at them constantly to see if somebody's doing something wrong.
Yeah, chief assured, it is not their intention to to monitor those uh, those cameras, but to check them uh on on complaint. You get a call and you're able to go then go look and direct the uh, the responding offices.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Following up on that uh, the resolution. Because the resolution is a little vague. I would like to suggest on the fourth from the bottom, it says now therefore be resolved. The second line after the word software, solely for uh police investigatory purposes. In other words, it's not a red light camera. I I don't want this to be an authorization that they can turn to red light cameras or other.
You can't have a red light camera unless uh you have specific legislation from New York State.
It it, what I'm concerned about is not having as few as that competing. So like, it's actually just memorializing what you've already said. Uh, in response to Glenn's comments.
Okay, I think that's fine.
I think, I think it's fine as written. Because I agree to go to any more detail on it.
Say it again, Dan. Say what you want to say again. Hold on, Laura.
Solely for police investigatory purposes.
Not for traffic.
Yeah, but what happens if we use it for some, what happens if we use it for something else? You know, what what happens if, you know, we see something that's not investigatory? I I I don't like that. It it locks you into something.
Yeah.
It it locks you into, you know, it what happens if if a camera catches somebody cutting down a tree? Right? And it's supposed to cut down a tree.
You'd be investigating it.
Yeah, but that, but the, that's not a police issue.
Let's leave it.
Well, it could be a police issue.
It's not. That's a code enforcement issue. Please don't, please don't go around.
But if, I mean, okay, but it, I I guess, first of all, the cameras are gonna be. I I don't know that we're gonna catch people cutting down trees on these cameras. I'm not sure that that's a reasonable thing to say.
I just chewed it out. I I don't think we need solely for police investigation. I I think it just locks you into something.
Isn't that what we just said it was for?
I mean, that that's what it was explained to us. That's in work session.
Yes.
It was, that was explained in the, you know, in uh
Something else may come up.
Board of Police Commissioners. And that's what you're just explaining to the public in answer to question. So why not put it in the resolution?
Something else may come up and and then we may want to use it for something else. Why, uh, why eliminate the possibility of using that tool for other purposes? It's it's just a, not a, not a smart thing to box yourself out.
Has something to say.
I would be concerned that if you put limiting language in the resolution moving the uh purchase as you may be giving rise to an evidentiary problem at any uh trial that results from some uh, you know, violation of law crime that these ca- cameras catch.
Okay, Laura, you want to say something?
Yes, hi, my name is Laura Body. I live at one seventy Washington Street. I am speaking as a resident, not as a member of the Board of Traffic Commission. Uh, I thank you all for for getting this far with the continued safety of the Village of America and your residents. I do not agree with sanctioning how you're going to utilize view anything for any reason you arise. We can't put limits, sanctions or enable that. We are going to be strapped, as our village attorney said. You, you, our purpose, your purpose is to make the community as a whole safe. Safe from anything that we cannot foresee. We cannot put sanctions on any item that we cannot foresee. That's a stall and that makes us unsafe. And that I don't appreciate. What I appreciate is moving this through, the Army Corps through, flooding through, safety through, but I don't appreciate it stops. Safety, danger, that's a real, real important issue. And I'm not gonna go into verbalizing the situation at hand. But it's real and it's evident and it's here. It's in our village. It's at night. It's during the day. Anybody's child, any item, any car can be stolen, any bodily harm can be had. Anything out of the ordinary can be reported and viewed. We should never put a sanction on safety. Ever.
Thank you.
And I hope that this goes through without any more blur or stops. Much appreciated.
Thank you. James?
James Body again, one seventy Washington Street. I just wanna reiterate what you said, but not only that, our police force is short staffed. And I know that they have a few officers at the academy, but they're still short eight to ten police officers. So it would be very helpful to have cameras. Um, the B L M uh mural that got vandalized, the camera was there, it caught the person. You know, I mean, nothing, it's it's all about being positive and safe. Having some security in our, in our village. It would definitely help our police force. I mean, I think we need to mention that. I just thank.
Thank you. Come on, Laura. Okay, all right. I'm I'm for approving it as is.
That's fine, but then I think we should take back what we said. That's all. That was good. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Hi. Resolution authorizing change order number three of additional section of wall replacement Hillside Bridge. Uh, Mr. Sonoff, could you give us a brief?
Yeah, uh, this is just to repair a section of the wall adjacent to the Hillside Avenue Bridge that was damaged during Hurricane Ida. Uh, we're gonna do that work under the contract, but it's gonna be ninety-seven percent by this is just about it to pay for the work, that work, which is the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or concerns?
Well, thank you for all your help on the bridge, too.
Uh, Cal, make the motion.
I'll second.
Please call Mr. Fusco.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Hi.
Resolution approved change order to contract twenty twenty-one Hillside Avenue Bridge replacement. This is another one. Am I getting this screwed up?
No, we're gonna hold off. I'm gonna hold off on this one. I need to review this with the engineer.
Okay, to be held. All right. Yeah, I is to be held. J. Oh, we're back to.
No.
Yeah.
All right, right, okay.
Alcohol concerts in a park.
A H H.
Right, right, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Resolution authorizing uh change order for paving at Harbor Island Park. Uh, where we we recently paved Harbor Island Park. And we did it piggybacking on a contract from uh Dan's old company, uh Scarsdale. And uh that had a provision that if the cost of material went up uh, so with the contract and as everybody knows petroleum has gone up quite a bit. Dan, you have something you want to say? Well, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? No, call roll. I'm sorry. It's it's a money thing.
He's young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, resolution authorizing uh, the way, I'm sorry, uh, three, four, I is saved. Four J, resolution authorizing a serving of alcohol at concerts in a park. Same as before, uh, the Emmeline Theater in conjunction with the Arts Council uh, is having a couple concerts in a park. And uh, they want to have uh some refreshments. Uh, and this requires board approval. Any questions or concerns?
No.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Orgy.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. I encourage anyone who wants some good entertainment to go down and look at the Arts Councils and the Emmelins concerts. They do an excellent job.
July twentieth and August seventeenth.
Next up, communication to the board.
There was a press item.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The person in the rear of the archway.
Oh, yes. Person in rear of the archway. Okay, item K is to add an item to agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adding item?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, item L is the board approving the contract with the Patrolman's Benevolent Association, which is the union that represents all of our police officers, I believe exclusive of the chief, the lieutenants on down. And I, I believe this contract is a fair contract for the residents. I think it's a good contract for the employees whose hard work and commitment to the community we all value. And, you know, we wish everybody good luck and we're glad we came to a contract that served both the residents and our fine police department. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Orgy, please.
Trustee young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi.
Thanks to Dan and to the PBA.
Don't spend it all in one place.
It's a gas station.
Next up. Communication to the board.
Once the PBA ratifies, if we could get a note of the terms of the contract and how it's going to affect the budget. Um, Harbor Island, you had one person here mentioning the fact that, you know, he wasn't sure if he was breaking the law. That's because you have a series of sign that says there's no dogs allowed after eight AM. It says dogs are allowed between six AM and eight AM. I thought that was rescinded a year ago.
What, Matt?
Yet this, all those signs remain on Boston Post Road. There's gotta be five or six of them. Then the only non, uh, sign on smoking is the same sign that's been there for years, which is on the gate of the beach that says smoking permitted where designated by the village manager. That's the only sign in the entire park dealing with smoking. We do have a sign on the way into the park that states no picnicking or barbecuing. Yet we have four food trucks and two ice cream trucks that are in the park regularly and a snack bar at the entrance. We have an Italian food truck. We have a seafood food truck. We have a Mexican style, Brazilian style food truck. And we have a Walters food truck that regularly go down. And then we have a Mr. Softy. And we gotta give humor. So obviously, and we rent out the pavilion and they bring food in. What is our policy about food in the park? You can't have no picnicking and have eight entities selling food. This has to be updated. The signs that say no dogs, you know, dogs only permitted from six AM to eight AM have to come down. And you have to have signage that reflects what the actual rules are. You couldn't give a ticket to anybody in the park right now. Because any, any lawyer worth his salt would go in there and say, how, how am I supposed to know that that's prohibited? There's no signs. There's nothing. To go back to the budget. We have, um, again, the sewer repairs is, is, is the last presentation and getting that out to bid is major. We're, we're on time restraints with that. We don't wanna be put into a situation where we start to get fined per day by the EPA. And Hermione, a couple of years ago, told us, we were, we, he begged, borrowed, and steeled to get us the time that we have. We also have a presentation due for the Hallstead Avenue Paving Project. The Hunter Tier Repairs, we've been under court order from the state. The Hunter, Hunter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Court order?
Yeah, well, it was found deficient by New York State. Not, not a court order, I'm sorry. It was not deficient from New York State. Uh, we still need to do something about a new village wall. At least start architectural plans for it. We have the Merrick Avenue Firehouse, which is no longer being purposed by MNC. So why either, you know, fix it, sell it, or sell it as is? If we have no purpose for it, why, why, why are we just holding on to it? And then we have the sea wall repairs, which we are getting, you know, agreed for. And then on the wish list, we have a new fire truck. We have police cars that are supposed to be coming out of the the unrestricted funds budget. We talked about the cameras. We've got body cameras coming. We have the adjustment with the budget that's gonna be made, made because we have the the police contract that was just done. We have sidewalks at Rushmore, which we pushed to get a we pushed to get a study done on in old Boston Post Road. And then we have, I asked about the schoolhouse roof that a year ago. And then we approved getting a roof over the transfer station. That was an emergency to protect the equipment, and that was thirteen months ago. And nothing, nothing has been done on that. And then lastly, we have the community grants that are coming in that are matching grants, and we need the money for that. That is why you have to have a meeting on what your spending and capital budget is. Thank you.
Thank you. You timed that perfectly almost. All right. Report from the village manager.
I think there are several items. First, I've, I've been on that manager there. No one will argue with that. Recently, the mayor and board of the community have continued to fund a birds are buried project that has been sitting idle for years. And a serious progress. Give everyone an example of how much my staff and I are doing. I want to write that. We are meeting with the dredging team tomorrow morning. We've added additional resources to hand clean the river streams under the county permit. Last Thursday, I met with the Washingtonville community at Geneseo Park to explain the extensive sewer renovation project and subsequent street dreams that is needed on both of those streets. Friday, DPW leadership and I met with the town of Frye administrator and department head to facilitate drainage, dredging in the town portion of the Beaver Smart Club and looked at the short street bridge. We are finally getting our surrounding communities to pay attention to our needs. While I've not been designated as the official project manager for the army court project.
I need to be.
I'm willing to work with the person, with that person, the person who uses all those resources to make it go quicker and more speed. Now we need a new village hall that will preserve the current peace and corporate to convert it to dual community use space and evacuation. Additionally, as we build the new village hall, the village offices must have the ability to convert staff offices temporary to temporary housing for this place. We all have the ability to work from home. So in the event, in the event of a major flood or other disaster, we will convert the new village hall offices to an appropriate temporary shelter with family rooms and proper facilities. There may be a future of luxury decorations because evacuating the high school was a mess as it was flooded, lost power, had no generator, and would not be available to us if the school was in session for an IED type of thing, which I'm afraid will happen. We need a new village hall and evacuation shelter, and it is an emergency. I will also be meeting with many community groups to develop a plan to bring in local treasurers as longer term shelters to help displaced residents. That idea along with the new village community would see response to contract with hotels countywide and specialized training staff to support our displaced population will be our goal this year, starting with a first meeting in July eleven. The village's public information officer will set up a meeting for each of me with all the groups to gather ideas and help manage both disaster hazards. Ideally, if we build one hundred percent affordable housing in non-electoral areas, we will be doing our business and ourselves a tremendous service. The mayor and I have had many conversations regarding this. That must happen as soon as possible. Finally, I wanted to congratulate the recreation and park staffs on their recent award for best public park and their illustrious village pride department for the best annual festival and best local parade awards. Hard work really does pay off. Thank you. Thank you. Secondly, I do have an announcement. Last Friday, the governor issued a press release on the transportation alternative program. And while normally a governor's press release is not, you know, the greatest news, the village is getting three million nine hundred nine thousand, yes, or three million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred twenty dollars in grants to repair sidewalks, approximately seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred linear feet of sidewalks. Install thirty-eight bump outs, reduce, to reduce the current crossing width of fifty-five feet. Traffic signal upgrades to the North Berry, Fossett Avenue traffic. This is a tremendous project. I anticipate design will take several years.
Yeah.
I, I will say there was a project that literally took place around the corner from me that got a tax grant that was in design for three years before they.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank our engineers from Hudson Valley Engineering Associates who help provide technical assistance for the grant, and we do want to use them for engineering and design, as well as our grant writing itself for Millennium.
Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I'd like to thank you because I know how hard you worked on it. And I know how much input you had toward it. And this is a real feather in your cap. Thank you for the village.
Thank you. And, you know, the, the grant application also coincided with our recovery of the fire. Plus, okay, just two items to honor for the record.
Well done, Dan.
Summer camp plus agreement and the intermissal agreement with the town of Merrick for use of the.
Thank you. And the town is very grateful for that. Report from our friend, the clerk treasurer.
Yes, mayor, just a friendly reminder, taxes are due by July first. That is all, mayor.
It's very friendly.
Very friendly.
And, and just up to piggyback on that friendly reminder, if you get them in late, we have no authority to waive late fees.
Much as we want to.
They, they are set by New York State. You know, we, we couldn't under any circumstances.
No.
Uh, so don't yell at Orgy. Don't yell at people in the clerk's treasures department. You can call and yell at me. But I'll tell you this story. Just since I was six, it's, it's getting better. So thank you. And then, and Orgy, I, I know this time of year is a hectic time of year for your office. And thank all the folks who worked there for the hard work they do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Village Attorney?
Nothing for me to either.
Well said. Minutes, commission boards and committees, minutes of board trustees work in regular session of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Board of Architecture Review of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Planning Board of May twenty-fifth and June eighth, twenty twenty-two. Before we adjourn, I just want to point out there's a week full of a lot of activities here in the village.
I just want to mention Merrick Cinema has also opened. Everybody, supported or losing, Merrick Cinema got a movie house back.
It wasn't communication to the board. That was. There was a general announcement, which you, you don't really have the authority to do, but okay. There was a parade, the fireman's parade in the Village of Merrick on Wednesday, June twenty-ninth, starts at Merrick Avenue School, ends down in the harbor. And at the harbor, you could bring the kids to enjoy the carnival. We, we have a very long carnival this year. And the fireworks are on July fourth, which is a Monday this year. So, and also in conjunction with our fireworks, the St. Thomas Orchestra, working through the committee, the Arts Council will be performing during the fireworks. It's, it's really spectacular way to watch the fireworks. And so please come down to the Village of Merrick in the next week and a half and bring the kids. You're guaranteed to have a good time. It's a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Hi.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Everybody have a safe Fourth of July.